Okay.
Whenever you.
Pete, you good over there?
Yep.
Sorry, whenever you like.
All right, so because we're on a tight schedule, I'm gonna get kicked off here while Gus is getting his computer up and running. But I would like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Select Board meeting. I do want to note that this meeting is being held in hybrid format. The Select Board is here in person. Members of public may attend in person, which I see we have some out there. In addition, members of public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining one of two ways. Go to the town website. If you go to the calendar, select tonight's meeting, there is a link to Zoom. If you don't have access to a computer, you, there is a conference call dial-in number available. And then, most importantly, the document links, everything that you're going to hear and see us do this evening, you have the opportunity to read along. This meeting is being recorded, so you can view it at a later date if you find it so entertaining you want to watch it twice. And we will be going into executive session at the close of this meeting this evening and will not be reconvening. But before I get things underway here, I do want to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. All right, kick things off. Our first appointment is School Building Committee to provide an update and to request signing of the initial compliance document and discuss other documents needed for completing Module One. And to request the appointment of two committee members to the School Building Committee as required by MSBA, one being a member of Select Board and the addition of Robert, Facilities Director. Gosh, you trash in the joint.
I just tried to line this all up. You know who I am.
All right, so join us up here. I mean, as we go through this, if there are any questions, please step up to the mic. It does not make any additional noise here, but it certainly helps those at home here. Otherwise, we get messages on our screen that they can't hear who's talking. All right, welcome.
Thank you, thank you all for having us tonight. I'm Carolyn Casey, School Building Committee member and.
Bob Mead. Member.
We just want to give you an update and then you actually said what we want to ask of you tonight. So just for an update, for those who don't know, we are in the MSBA program. It officially starts for Medfield on April first. And the first part of it is really a number of forms that have to be completed and turned in. So starting in April first, we can start sending in some forms. One of the forms is called the Initial Compliance Certification, requires a signature from the Select Board. It's one of those forms like whenever you do anything new, you have to just agree to the end. You don't get to discuss it or change anything, so it needs a signature. Some of the other pieces in this first part are the School Building Committee is discussing enrollment. We did an enrollment study a year ago. We're looking at that projection and other means of projecting because we need to decide how big the school should be. So we're looking at all our data to come up with that answer because that's part of Part One. There is a document where you have to tell what kind of maintenance you do in your buildings. They want to know your practices and make sure that you have a strong maintenance program if you're going to go and build something new. So that document is being created. And there's just a couple of other documents that we just, you know, need to read through and put together, and then we pass all that in. Our goal would be to get them in as soon as we can after April first because you have to get all your documents in. The MSBA needs a chance to look at it all, and then they have a meeting at the end of June. And if we got all our ducks in a row there, we could be on the agenda for that. And if they liked all our ducks, then we could move on to Part Two. And we want to be able to do that because Part Two starts the feasibility study. I should say the other big part of Part One is that we need enough money to show that we would do a feasibility study in the town of Medfield. We currently have one point one million, and there'll be a warrant article at this town meeting. We'll ask for another four hundred thousand, and that will bring us to the one point five, which is what everyone believes we would need. It seems to be the current amount towns are using to do a feasibility study. Now, we have an old one from the failed vote, and we've been going over it during SBC. And we're going to take any parts of the old one we can and use them, which might reduce the price a little bit. So we're in the middle of that. So as part, and one of the things in Part One is you have to form a School Building Committee, which we already have. We've been running for two years now. But, and they look at everyone that's on it and their expertise, and you fill out a form saying why you're on it. And then there are two things that we need, which is one member of the Select Board to join us. It'd be a non-voting member, but we need one member. And we need you to also appoint Robert Quinn. He's the Facilities Director. I haven't met him yet, but he, that position is needed on the SBC according to the MSBA regulations.
I don't want to throw my hat in the ring if you have any preference.
Makes sense to me. You've graduated from the school system.
So that works successfully.
Yeah.
Are you okay if I throw my hat in the ring to be the representative from Select Board?
Sure. You're willing to do all the work.
Of the committee or just of the Select Board representative from?
I'm an ex officio, so there's no vote. It's just a matter of being.
Yeah, they come to every meeting that you can come to. You know, Christine's there at every meeting.
So Christine, you've heard it here first. Ex officio means there's no work.
Because I'm ex officio in like ten minutes.
That's right, I called you out.
I'll just say she has work. She's already done a lot for us, but Select Board member then, yeah.
It's very helpful.
Yeah. And we'd love to see you starting in April.
Okay.
Just to, you know, because we're beginning to put forms in and make decisions like enrollments, so, you know, we would like to hear some.
I've been receiving the emails. I don't know if it's because Jeff had me sitting on a meeting probably, oh gosh, four, five months ago where I had a chance to listen to schools that had completed their projects, and then the representatives from those schools were talking about the good, the bad.
Right.
And it was super informative.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a good MSBA thing to, yeah, hear about the mistakes that hopefully we can avoid.
Right.
So the other pieces are that, and I said this at the last time we were here, we have an email update of, you know, using Constant Contact. We're trying to encourage everybody to sign up for that. It comes out once a month. It might come out twice a month, once we're into feasibility. You can find the link on the town website. If you look under Governments and the School Building Committee, you'll see a link. You just click it, and it'll ask for your email, and then you'll start getting the updates. And so we're trying to put down everything that we're trying to do. And if you wanted to take that link and share with your friends by email, that would be great because the more people in the community who are informed and involved, the better chance we have of coming up with a project in the end that it gets voted and it passes.
We need the input from the, from the townspeople. We've got as much, and whether it's information, that's positive, negative, whatever. We need everything so we can make sure we've got everything covered. So when we get down to the point that we're ready for a vote, there's a positive feeling in the town that this is done correctly, and we're going to support it.
Administratively, Christine, I mentioned to you two weeks or three weeks ago about the town website. This is, I'm only saying this because I just, I occasionally force myself to go look for things on the town website because I should know my way around the town website than the average bear. And there are two School Building Committee sites, links on the town website. One is the Dale Street School Building, which is the first logical place I went to, which was the last project. And then it's, the other one is.
Yeah, we're under.
School Building. It's Medfield School.
Medfield School Building Committee, and underneath it says School Committee Bylaw.
Right. Yeah, well, that, and see, yeah, so first off, I went, oh, that's the committee that did the bylaw. So I, I looked elsewhere and I got to the Dale Street. So look under the Ms., not under the Ds.
Was there a recommendation to do something that we can surface that so if somebody is not going in? And then using that as an excuse later that they were getting old information.
We need, we need a, like an archive of old links that might be interesting.
We can move the bylaw committee off, yeah.
Well, I'm not worried about the bylaw. I'm worried more about the old project.
You figure it out when everything's.
The old one.
Two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty.
We've been talking about the old one to help us move forward, but I don't want people to get confused. So maybe you can say like prior or something.
I'm guessing while we're having this conversation, Brittany's doing it live.
Yeah, that's Brittany.
See, on the Select Board, my ex officio role is just the big dummy who has to try to find his way around the website. So I, I find these things out. It's like, I just went where it seemed to make sense.
Well, I think that's a good point. Super helpful because we're so involved in it, so it makes sense for us sometimes the past, and it doesn't make sense for people who aren't doing what we do every day. So it's always helpful to get that feedback.
Yeah. And the last thing I want to mention is one of the ways we're trying to involve the community is this idea of a neighborhood captain.
I love that idea.
Yeah, Norwood, I guess, used it when they were doing their high school and was pretty successful. So we put out a call, and I have about eight or nine people who have responded, and we're going to be meeting for the first time next week.
Any neighborhoods or any sections of town that are lacking right now that we could publicize, like anyone from such and such area?
Yeah, a lot of the people who have so far stepped forward are north of one oh nine. So if anybody south of one oh nine.
Throw neighborhoods out, just so people.
So we have Green Street, we have Flintlock already, we have Bridge. We have Maple and Maplewood.
So we're not hearing the back office, South Street, so Indian Hill, Loffler, Granite.
Indian Hill down there or South Street, I mean, I'm there along South Street.
Hill Crest.
Yeah.
Working our way around to Elm, we could, you know, we need folks. And even folks up on the north side, come on and help because they may know fifteen or twenty people that are key for us to get in touch with. And that's part of it is to help more outreach, to get more people informed about precisely what it is we're doing. And if people don't like it, then they, so that they can come and tell us, no, not like this, try this.
Right.
We want to hear everything.
Okay.
We haven't worked out exactly how it will work. It's the first meeting. I want to make it as easy for the captains as possible for them to get information out and bring information back. But it says right on the update, it's actually me to email at the SBC. And then I just contact people and we'll, you know, start moving ahead.
Good.
So. Any questions that you have for us about what's happening?
I've got two things for you. First, the Energy Committee met last week, and the last time we went through this process, we learned that it's helpful to get the people from Eversource involved very early. So that even to help pick the right professionals for you to use, so that people that are used to dealing with energy-saving issues get involved at the beginning. Kim Cullenade is the person that you need to, to connect with at Eversource. She's the one that leads it for Eversource, and she's willing to come and help you. I shared that information after the Energy Committee meeting with Mike and Meredith last week. They said, come April, but I'll just share that information with you. Because the last time it was, I know it was one of the things that I was very concerned about the last time, making sure that we were energy efficient as we could be. Second thing is, I happen to have a thing that I, that I really like, that I discovered at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting Trade Show in January. It's something called Flash Vote. And for seven thousand dollars a year, they will come and find three or four hundred people in Medfield, a statistically significant sample. And then for seven thousand a year, you can, you can survey your sample and find out what your residents want and don't want. And I just thought that that might be something that might help you.
Okay, great, I will bring that back. And Mike did share with the whole committee all of the emails from the Energy Committee, and it's definitely in our plan.
Probably not the only one that's sending you guys emails about it.
Yeah, yeah.
They're very focused on it.
We were waiting for Part One to get over, so when we end that, then with feasibility is the time to get everybody going.
Kim Cullenade keeps telling us, can't get me involved too early, so we're just sharing what we hear.
Yeah, no, that's great, thank you.
And it's very.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, I know, so we appreciate it.
So to that point, I want to ask something. So you said a good soundbite is about four hundred people?
Statistically significant, yeah. My neighbor does, did market research, and he had told me that if you get the right three or four hundred people, you can get a significant, statistically significant sampling. And you can learn what people want.
Right, so we've had two surveys, and each survey we've had over a thousand people.
Yeah, but you're not picking them in a statistically significant way, so that, you know, you may or may not have a good result. So that's what you're buying, I think, with the seven grand from these people is you get the right three hundred people.
Still, I, because Bill Werner is on our committee, and he does the same thing. He does market research. So he, we were all very pleased with the number of people we got and the.
For the better, that's, I mean, that's a good number.
Yeah, and the last one, we asked what precinct people are in, and we had an even. We had twenty.
That was amazing.
Twenty-five percent from all four precincts.
I'm amazed that people know their precinct.
Well, we actually put a link in there.
It was helpful, the map, so.
Yeah, so that was great.
Yeah. Pete, do you, I'm guessing that if they're charging seven thousand a year, the issue is that they have the discipline to select a true random sample that's statistically correct. All of our surveys are always self-selection, so the issue, you might, you might get it distributed geographically. So whether it's worth it or not is a different issue, but I think it's, what he's saying here is true. If you're really going to say, oh, we got four hundred responses, and it's telling us something, then you have to have true random selection out of the entire population. And you need a method for doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, Pete, that's helpful. Appreciate it.
I think it's a great, I mean, I've always wanted to try to figure out what the town wants. And for seven thousand a year, I think it's worth knowing how to, or being able to ask six times.
I have a follow-on to Pete's other thing on the Energy Committee. First off, I think, I suspect his advice to bring Eversource in as early as possible makes sense because that's where you're going to get the opportunities to do it. In the last project, however, I was the hawk around what's the incremental added cost of what we were doing. And I'm going to give you an anecdote because I'll probably ask the question again, and I don't want to hear the same answer I heard last time, which was, when I went to the Chair of the Energy Committee, the answer I got is, that's the Building Committee Chair's problem. And when I went to the Building Committee Chair, the answer was, don't ask me, because the Energy Committee has been pushing for it. So nobody had their hand on the tiller around if, if we do something by way of energy conservation. I'm just asking for cost visibility if it's incremental, because originally the plan was net zero ready, and then all of a sudden it blossomed to net zero. And for a while there, it sounded like it wasn't going to cost anything extra. And then I've subsequently gotten estimate that probably says about a quarter of the excess cost of that school was that cost. But even that's, you know, that's unreliable.
I think that makes complete sense that.
Just want, if it's going to add costs, just want to know what the cost is, that's all.
And you want to know what's the return it.
Yeah.
What are you going to get for it?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Does it pay back in ten years, twenty years?
Right.
Certainly has to pay back within the lifetime of the model.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it always costs more to do those things, geothermal or solar or battery. The selectmen from Lexington that came and explained to us how Lexington got to their decision to do a net zero school. They were including batteries in their school so that they were actually generating, and they had geothermal, and they, but they were generating electricity and storing it and selling it back to the grid at times when the grid needed power. And that's part of how they got to net zero was by becoming a seller.
And Megan Sullivan actually got back to me on that one because it cost, it did actually add cost to the school, the school cost to buy the batteries. But what happened was that Eversource offered like an added incentive. If they would, if they would release their power when Eversource wanted them to, basically, the cash that was coming in from Eversource was enough to serve the extra loan. If you find a way to take out extra, I don't care how expensive the school is, if we take out loans and somebody else is giving us an income stream to cover the loan, that doesn't count as an added cost to the school as long as it's a self-supporting thing. That was what, that was what Megan explained on that one.
I think it was positive from day one because of the fact that they were selling the power and things of that sort.
Well, and having solar panels on my, on my roof, and I've done a little bit of research into it. Doing it with a school, their high times of energy use are to June, July, August, bit of September. And one of the buildings just collecting the energy and not using as much of it. So this, this could be very advantageous.
My only point is, this cost is, I don't think the price of the school is going to be a happy number for anybody. So I'd rather, I'd rather get the, you know, get that on the table now, that's a really important thing to do.
No, we don't want surprises. No, really not.
You done, Pete?
Yes.
Yes. I have, I have three things. First one's administrative. The cover of the, of the document that we're approving. I have, I have three things. First one's administrative. The cover of the, of the document that we're approving.
Yeah, and I just want to note one quick thing. We, we're supposed to be starting interviews roughly around 6:30, so I just want to try to attempt to keep this going on.
Oh, these are all short. The, all I'm saying is the cover doesn't actually have our school district entered in on the first paragraph and at the top. So we're going to approve a document, but just make sure, make sure you know to add that.
I think we just gave you the blank one just so you could see before you, like, we didn't start filling it out yet. We just wanted you to see what it was.
Okay. My second question was, this is just, I'm not, I'm not going, this is not an attack, I'm just curious. On page five of the document, it talks about the fact we have to have a fraud, waste and abuse policy. And I was curious whether, do we have a town fraud, waste and abuse policy, or is that another thing that has to be, we're signing something that says we're going to do all these things and.
I believe we have one from the last go-around. Let me look.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we've had to file one other times for other grants.
Okay, okay. So I, every time we sit there and find these things and there's all these provisions that you're saying, I certify, we comply with this law and that law. It's like, I'm not reading those laws. And so I look for the unusual ones, and that's one that jumped out at me. It's like, gosh, do we have one of those? I don't, if we do, I didn't know about it. Last question's financial also. The, with the $400,000 you're getting, you'll have $1.5 million to the feasibility study. My memory could be faulty, but as I recall, in the last project, we had $1 million for the feasibility study. And this feasibility study, we're trying to repurpose what we can from the prior feasibility study. So when I'm looking at the numbers, I'm saying, so we did a feasibility study a couple of years ago for a million. We're going to repurpose some of that and bring it in, but we have $1.5 million to fund the feasibility study. And I just didn't understand how those numbers had jumped like that.
So well, the first go-around, the state would have paid for feasibility study.
That was the $1 million that MSBA gave us, as far as I know. We didn't, we didn't spend $2 million on a feasibility study. I could be wrong, my recollection could be wrong here, I'm just saying.
I'll have to check that exact number, but they fund the first one, and then when you get a failed vote, you fund it again. So the 1.5 is sort of, we don't think we'll need all that because we can use parts, but we don't want to not have enough. Because, do you know what I mean? So like, they're all.
Yeah, so you're, I'm going to use a word that's too harsh. So we're sandbagging this number just a little bit. We're going to need the money one way or the other. So we put, my whole point is, if the state gave us $1 million to do the last one, and we're redoing or we're reusing pieces of it, it was a severe question. Why do we think it's going to take us $1.5 million?
Six years ago.
Yeah.
Just so we're.
Right.
And many prices have jumped. But they looked at what other schools were currently needing for feasibility. Again, they don't, those towns don't necessarily have what we did, which is an old one.
An old one to go off of. They were starting new.
Yeah, they're starting new.
So other schools now are spending around $1.5 million. You'd like to have the $1.5 million, so you're sure you're okay.
So we know we'll be okay. We won't have to come back again.
Because that's the last thing you want, is to see us back in October, ask them for more to finish the work.
Like, I'm the finance hawk. It's like, okay, I get it, I get it.
And also I believe Pete Michelson, who's the Warrant Committee representative, has asked that once we finish the feasibility study, any money that is left over in that account would be transferred to the tax mitigation.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. I'm on board with that too.
Until after the feasibility study is completed, but that's what we would do with any overage on that.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm done.
Do we send any sale monies from town lands?
So we can't actually put them in, you can't appropriate them into that account, but there's left in a sale of land proceeds account. We have indicated that we will take that money and put it towards the tax mitigation. You just can't physically appropriate it to that account.
Okay. You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm good?
Chris Potts, 7 Curry Street, literally two seconds. On the names, on the name issue, Gus, that you brought up, I think the thing that I'm curious about is when we go through the Dale Street program and they approve the committee, the last project, I think we were required to use whatever name was on that document, whatever, whatever's going through it. I only mention that because when you're trying to steer people, trying to train, train people to look for the meeting documents, that if we're required to use a name, right now we have it under the School Building Committee, the logo says MSBA, MSBC. So I'm just thinking, trying to get communication out there about how people are going to be able to find information based on the name when it's in the, like, the meeting, the meeting list of agendas. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
Just to, just to clarify it with everybody. And then the good thing is, this time around with the project, there are grants for sustainability. Last time there weren't. So that'll be something to look for to reduce the cost, so.
I'm just going to make a quick comment. I, I know with the School Building Committee, this go-around, we actually have, I think, one gentleman. Tony is the CEO of a construction company. So I think he probably knows a few things that go on when you're starting to build a school or retail center or whatever. And there's a few other people. So as we, as we reach out to Eversource, it should be a nice conversation because it's not like everyone there is new to it. You've got people that I'm sure deal with Eversource every day, let alone three times a day.
We do.
So. Oh, good. Alright, so do we need to cast a vote here or just?
You want to start, we start with the approving the initial compliance, okay. I move that we, I move that we sign the initial compliance document needed for completing Module One.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move that we appoint Eileen Murphy as the Select Board Representative and Robert Quinn as the Facilities Director to the, the Augmented School Building Committee to comply with MSBA requirements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, we should help us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So is my first meeting with you April 1st or?
That's always the first one, if it must be the second.
Won't impact my travel. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Fire Chief Interviews, and we are just a little past 6:30 and. Alright, we have Captain Jeffrey Benati on his way up. And just so everyone understands, we have our, our candidates downstairs in the warrant room with no electronics. So as Captain Benati is up here being interviewed, it's not like the other gentlemen can be listening and being prepped for the answers. That we have a proctor down there so that this is very clean and, and we don't even have a distinct advantage. So just please, anyone watching, anyone curious as to where the other candidate is, he's not sitting out in the audience. He will be downstairs and we have, as I said, somebody there with him. God knows if they're talking Red Sox or what they're talking, but they won't be watching phones or TVs or computers.
Interviewing in the modern age.
Yes, yes. No, no smartwatches to boot. And the question, is that at the end of all the interviews or at the end of each interview? Your card's over there.
Each interview. So if there are people in the audience who would like to ask a question of the candidate through the Select Board, you're welcome to do that. We just ask you to fill it out on a piece of paper. I will review it to make sure it's an appropriate question, and then if so, I will hand it to the Chair to ask the question of the candidate.
Welcome. Captain Benati, front and center, right here. We're a few minutes late, but we're, alright, welcome.
Greetings. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you helping.
Thank you. Alright, so welcome. On behalf of the Select Board, we're excited to kick off the interview for our placement of Chief Carrico. So as we get things underway, why don't you just introduce yourself, give a little background, because not everybody in the room may know you and fire away.
Actually.
Do we need a microphone now or do?
Take, Mike, Mike, you can take ours if you want.
Yeah, that's a good call. I was going to offer mine, but then.
Thank you.
Testing, testing.
Alright, how's that?
Excellent, thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Jeff Benati. As far as background, I was hired initially on the Call Department in 1992. And then in 1997, I was appointed as the first full-time career firefighter, which to me was quite an honor. So, fast forward, 28 years later, in 2000, I was appointed or assigned and appointed the EMS Coordinator's position. I've been overseeing the EMS operation since. 2005, appointed as Lieutenant and have been in leadership position since. And then we were recently restructured as captains back in 21, so, and here we are.
Excellent, welcome.
Thank you.
So I think that three of us are just going to ask a variety of questions. I'll kick off with Pete and let you ask some questions of Captain Benati.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for coming, Jeff. So I've got a list of minimum qualifications and it says bachelor's degree. What, what's your situation on that?
Right, as I read through the prerequisites, I don't meet all the requirements per se. And then when it, as it read, further read, it said, or a combination thereof.
Okay.
I feel that I bring versus, on paper, I bring intrinsic knowledge and total now 33 years' experience.
Yep.
Paramedic and 20 years as a leader.
Yeah, and I agree with you, but being the first full-time firefighter hired, that's a great honor, so.
I don't have a traditional bachelor's degree, but I did graduate college, so if that means anything, but it's.
I'm sorry, can you explain that?
I said I don't have a traditional bachelor's degree, but I did graduate college with an associate's.
Oh, okay, with an associate's. Alright. So in, in 2017, we went outside the department to hire the Fire Chief. What have you done since that time to prepare to be the next Fire Chief?
Just maintained the continuity of my position as the EMS Coordinator and as the Captain of Group Three. Leading Group Three and as the EMS Coordinator, essentially organizing, maintaining and running the EMS portion of it, that has, takes up probably 99% of my time. So I mean, I've worked with the Chief, obviously. We work together on EMS issues.
So for those of us that don't work in the Fire Department, Group Three, you're obviously organized around different groups then, at least three of them.
Correct, yeah, four groups, 1, 2, 3, 4. My group that I've been assigned to is Group Three.
Alright, and so do you have the same firefighters that work with you all the time in your group?
Yeah, occasionally there is some reorganization and moving, you know, movement to maintain, you know, medical staffing. Or if someone was to make, be promoted, they'd have to be moved to another group.
What do you see as the biggest challenges of the department and what do you see on the horizon for our ambulance service?
Challenges right now, as a result of increasing the size of the department, is going to be mentoring and bringing the new members up to speed, getting them trained up, making sure that they attain their certification. The EMS challenges, the system is continual, continually and increasingly becoming busier and busier. In the past four years, we've gone, say, from an average of 550 to over 900 EMS calls per year on the EMS side of things.
So the mentoring is because you have newer, younger firefighters.
Yeah, and you want to ensure, you want to instill confidence in them. You don't, although legally by the state, they're allowed to practice per se, but that's not fair to them.
Yeah.
Or people in general. So what we do is we create a program where we monitor them, bring them up to speed, make sure they're trained, more for their sake, their confidence and their abilities.
I know as a new attorney, I didn't know how to practice law, so. What does customer service mean to you in terms of the Fire Department and what does it mean to you as a Chief in Medfield?
Providing the services that the residents request and require. We are emergency services, which is a very broad term. We provide a wide gamut of services. Most of the time, you know, if we get a request for something that a citizen or a resident business owner is concerned about, we get there, we find nothing great, obviously. We like it that way.
Find nothing what?
No, I'm saying if we show up and we find nothing wrong, or it's, it's not an emergency, then it's a great thing.
Yeah, I usually see people at times of stress and distress.
You have to, you have to handle all the requests with genuine concern, address the issues as needed, refer things to the proper authorities if need be, you know, be it resources, say for Eversource for gas or electric. And just be, be open, open to the public.
I often think of the Fire Department as, as part of our Human Services Department because of the people that you serve, that you're called to deal with.
Yeah, as I say, people are always happy to see us anyways, 99% of the time.
How are you able to affect teamwork in your position now? Is, how are you able to affect teamwork in your position as a captain and how would that change as Chief? Teamwork.
Amongst the members?
Yeah, how would you, how would you make people work together?
What I've observed, I think we have excellent teamwork. The newer, and for lack of a better term, I'll refer to it as a newer generation of people that have been hired, I've been very impressed with their level of energy, their eagerness. It's almost self-sustaining. They're very respectful, very engaging. As far as the Chief and maintaining that, I would say, I would like to increase frequency of officers' meetings. Make sure information is passing back and forth. Keep everyone informed. Keep the younger people involved, and that seems to be working very well right now.
And when you say working well now, because the Chief is keeping the younger people involved?
Right, they, yeah, exactly.
Alright.
Right.
Can you maybe discuss your experience in dealing with individuals who demonstrate a lack of performance? What do you do then?
On my end, as far as, as far as the EMS side is, speaking as an EMS Coordinator, there've been minimal performance issues.
Oh, good.
And I've been very, very lucky. Excuse me. We've had a couple of instances where they were not gross mistakes, but these incident, excuse me, incidents did require us to self-report to the State, which leads me on to another, or led me to becoming involved in learning how to deal with the State and dealing with our medical directors at a deeper level. The incidents were quickly resolved, readily resolved, resolved, and the State was very satisfied. Did not require any disciplinary action. There was minor remedial action. And that was monitored by our medical director and ourselves, per se, a period of four to six months after the incident. But it was luckily and fortunately, there were no gross, gross mistakes, and we do monitor that. I think we're proactive in that sense, that we prevent that, to avoid it, in a good way.
Good, good. Can you maybe describe a specific initiative that you have led or you would propose that, to enhance the collaboration and unity between the Call and full-time firefighters?
Not a specific collaborative or initiative, but I think I maintain a decent working relationship and a respectful working relationship with them. I would like to be able to maintain that. They are a very functional part of the department. I think recruitment has become a problem over the years. And just because of the landscape of society has changed. What I would like to do, I know the Chief has run the cadet programs, that would most likely, I think would be a very good thing to continue. And then based on recruitment, maybe network with area chiefs and see what they've done, if they've had any better success, find out what their formula has been, maybe implement some of those issues, those solutions.
Can you think of any specific steps that you might take to integrate the different cultures between the Call and the full-time firefighters?
Yeah, I do. I think one of the primary ways to do that would be to better designate individuals for training. And in that, develop better training guidelines and standardization and incorporate that at both levels, career and Call. And have everybody work together, bring everybody to the same standard, train everybody to the same standard. That way they will develop mutual respect for each other.
Yeah, that sounds like that makes sense, yeah. Thank you so much, Jeff. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Round two. Well, Jeff, you and I have known each other for a long time.
Yes, sir.
I can, I can vouch for your being a good cook on scout campouts without any doubt, and I, I actually I think I'll probably have different questions for each of you because, because I do know you and you, thankfully, you were part of the team that helped my family out several years ago on a couple of different calls. One of the things that I remember all these years from that was you being there at a time I wasn't there. But my wife remarking after how both quickly the fire department responded and she actually called you out as sort of being one of the cool, calm, collected people that was on site, and that's not, that has not disappeared from my memory all these years. It's also, I don't know if you were on the, another call where my, my son found the gasoline that I'd hidden on the back of the shed in a peanut butter jar under a three-foot piece of plywood and then proceeded to drink it. Well, that was what, that was one that, that was one where the fire department, or the, the emergency folks on the fire department responded very quickly. Determined it was at the end of the day and they couldn't afford to deal with traffic getting into Boston, so they basically stopped a soccer game at the Dover Sherborn High School in order to bring in the med, med flight to pick him up. And he's the one who's now a Coast Guard helicopter pilot, so that early experience had a profound impact on him, well beyond what the, what the fire department does.
Inspiration.
I'm partly gonna go through what the, what the job description was and just sort of take a little bit of an inventory, but it'll be a different one for each one of you. And, and to do it, let me start with a basic question, and I'll let you answer that, and then I'll introduce something. You've been with the fire department a long time. It's very clear to me from your resume that you have a lot of, both experience in terms of on-the-ground experience, but also with the various training and qualifications that you got. You have, you have a lot of in-depth qualifications, so, and you've been around long enough that you have some great skills. As you look at the job of fire chief, how does that challenge you or how do you see that job being different from what you've spent so many years doing very well? How, how does this job? I'm partly asking, how does it challenge you? How do you see it being different in terms of the role that you'd have to play than what you've been playing for, for some time now?
I think the scope of fire chief over the years has changed. It's more, in my opinion, an administrative position. Probably the hardest challenge would be to learn to step back. And that's where selection of good officers and good people comes into play, where you can trust your people. You need to let them do their job. That's probably the most difficult thing. There would be definite, definite learning curve as far as a chief's position in, now you're interacting, you're working with the warrant committee, you're working with the select board, you're working with the town administrator. But I don't think that's anything that's not attainable. I think, I, I mean, I've known everybody for so long. I don't think that's something that would be very hard to transition to.
Okay. Let me introduce my framework, 'cause you actually set it up. I, I, this is, no, I was just, I was asking myself the same question I just asked you. What's different about being a chief? And I looked partly at the job description. I reflected partly on what chiefs in the town have done. And I, for better or worse, and you can critique my framework too, but for better or worse, I broke it into four, four things. I called it business management, but what I'm really getting at is the kind of stuff you just mentioned. Having to represent the department to the town, having to figure out how to deal with budgets, how to, you know, how to have the, the fire, fire department reaching out to the community. It's all that stuff that's, I called it business management, for lack of a better word, and you started to talk about those things. The other one, I, I, the second one I had was fire operations management, which is actually what I think you've got deep, deep expertise at in qualifications. And so in other words, do you know as a chief what you need, what a fire department needs to do when it's facing things? I'm pretty sure you do.
I've been very fortunate.
Yeah.
Fortunate for me, unfortunate for the people, but, you know, involved in probably well over three dozen fires, so I've been around for a lot of that.
The third one is what I'll call people leadership. So it's, it's literally, you're at the head of the fire department. And the, the attitude, the, you know, you're, you've had some good things to say about the people in the fire department right now. What I'm, what I'm not sure of in terms of what I see in your resume and things is how much experience you've had in actually, literally, bringing people up, leading teams, kind of having the impact. It's leveraging your own expertise across the entire fire department. I just didn't immediately see it in the resume or the background here.
Right, it's almost indirect. I see it as, again, as being an officer, being in charge of various groups. Bringing up the other people, teaching them your job, so training them, them up for the next thing. That's what I've done in general over the years. As far as the EMS side, again, the EMS portion of it eats up a lot, a lot of the time. That's maybe not readily evident, but I think what we've done is clinically, we have developed very good paramedics. I think they're very intelligent, they're very intuitive. And that, again, that's maybe not readily evident. It's not something you see every day, it's not very tangible. That would be the, the other portion of it.
And the fourth one I had was knowledge and expertise, not on the operation side, but as I was, what I did was, I was, I had like, in the, in the description, it talked about having to be involved in budget development, in collective bargaining, and in labor law and things like that, and again, it was just a blank for me in terms of how, what involvement you might have had in that, with that in the past.
I did sit in, I was initially on the original bargaining committee when the union was formed. That was a very, fairly long time because we were establishing the initial contract. After that, stepped back and let the other people step in on, as far as the union side of things. But I also got feedback from, well, now going through, if you wanna call it this with an interim chief, I'll call it two and a half chiefs, you know, two and a half. I've learned a lot from them in that regard. They would interject and...
Are you talking about Chief Hollingshead when he was?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, not, not tremendously experienced on the bargaining end of it, but it's something I think could easily be learned.
Well, if you were on the opposite side of the table, you probably, you probably, that's good skill to bring back into that.
At least you can understand both sides.
Right, okay. I've gotta get soft here on this, around the people management and relationships and networking. Aside from bringing the firefighters, the members of the department up to teach them the things that you know that what fire does. Have, have you ever dealt or how would you deal with if, if you faced this with what I guess I would call the culture of the fire department? In other words, in any, even in a good organization, at some point in time, you know, the seasons change and people start potentially spiraling down where they, instead of reinforcing the good stuff and going up, sometimes they grouse and so, or you get, sometimes you get a couple of people that do it. And what happens is you start auguring down unless you can lead the, the group to kind of unwind that and get it going in the, in the right direction. Are there things that you've done that, I'll call it, that affect morale or, you know, the, the little bit more ethereal qualities of a department? Dedication, you know, spontaneity, that stuff?
As I spoke earlier, surprisingly, the amount of, of self-sufficiency of the current group of people that we have, I've not experienced that yet. Yeah, some small things do happen, but also to try to lead by example. And I think by doing that, I think I have a lot of the respect and as a result of having the respect of the people that I work with, that keeps them up. Yeah, there are good days, there are bad days. I would hope that if there's any issues, we'll grab it at the group level. And their captain would definitely bring it to my attention. I would not hesitate to bring someone in the office and speak to them, counsel them, offer them help. You know, give them whatever assistance they may need.
Okay. Let our man there, Chief, pick up.
Alright, I will take it from here. Alright, so, so Jeff, this is the end of my first term as a select board member. This is my first time I've had a chance to do separate interviews, so.
Right.
The last couple of months I've done fire bargaining, now I've done the police bargaining, so now I sit here tonight in front of you. And this is an honor to be able to go through this, this interview process with you. And I did, again, being new at this, I actually spent a couple hours with Chief Carrico last Thursday. And I was blown away with the number of spreadsheets he has and how much he, I mean.
Yes.
It, it, and watching what we do here in this town and how dollars are so tight, I would love to know with involvement, what involvement have you had in budget creation and capital asset planning, management? And what are the most challenging parts of budgeting for you?
With this current administration, first and foremost, I think each administration brought its own thing to the table, its own, their own style. Chief Carrico has definitely brought a unique style, and I mean that in a good way, in that he has left a fantastic framework to work with. You mentioned the spreadsheets and the numbers. I've never seen anybody driven by numbers so much as my life, but I find that good. In this current administration, no, I did not have that much involvement with him per se. Again, that was on the cusp of bringing up the ALS service. That took away a lot of my attention. Previous administration, yes, I worked with Chief Kingsbury. We worked on the EMS budget, obviously, equipment budget. I was involved in a lot of purchasing of large equipment, the fire trucks, specifications. I'm very familiar with money, you know, you need it, you might not be able to get it. I think upcoming are gonna be some not-so-great times. And I think proactively now would be the time to start working with town administration and the select board and warrant committee regarding the chief's twenty-year projection plan. Where I think we're in pretty good shape right now as a department, but I think it needs to be revisited. Not so much restructured, but revisited, and things will need to be looked at and saying, "Yeah, that's not gonna work." I was impressed that he projected it out as far as he did. So as far as vehicle replacement, may have to look at other options.
And it was brought to my attention that in the last go-around, you put your ring in the hat for, for chief. From, from being passed over that time to sitting here in front of us now. Have you, have you gone back to get any of the additional trainings or anything that said, "Okay, I might not have got it last time. What can I do to make sure that next go-around I'm putting myself in better?"
Formally, no, I have not. Again, that was on the forefront when we were going through the ALS study committee. And Gus can actually speak to the, the amount of time that was spent on that, so that I would say it was interrupted per se.
Okay. And, and since you got wind that Chief Carrico was going to move on, have you had a chance to shadow him, have you had a chance to do things to prep yourself? Again, you've got big shoes to fill, right?
Right.
But I don't tell you have to have the exact same size shoe and nor do you have to have the same personality, but it's still, I mean, I, again, being the rookie here at the table, I'm overwhelmed when I sit and watch what he has to do and what Chief Garrett has to do. And, and it's a lot to learn, and he's leaving in a very short window.
Right. No, I've not had an opportunity to shadow him as much as I would have liked. Again, the EMS coordinator has taken up a lot of my time. I think he has left or has created a very workable framework, as I mentioned before, and I think it would be a relatively easy transition.
And what is your position on, on having current members of your fire crew and bringing on new recruits to participate in various trainings? And I'll ask this 'cause I was actually at the station, I think it was last week, and I bumped into Chris Becker, and he was there doing the, it's called Fire, what's it, Firefighter One? Which was just great. So what's your take on encouraging, you're gonna be the leader, right? So people are going to follow your example. And you may not have that right now, but it's, I would, I'd be curious, are you going to be encouraging people to take training?
Well, yeah, yeah, training is gonna be mandatory, period. It basically, essentially always has been. Are you regarding new recruits or?
New and current. Like if people, it's like I bumped into Tommy Cronin, and he was doing something that I was thrilled about. And it's taking an opportunity of, of things that we have in the contract that, I'm like, yay, that, we're, we're giving the fire fire department opportunities to better themselves, and I just wanna make sure that it's things they fought for in the contract, and I wanna make sure that the leader would be encouraging that and not saying, "Ah, you know, do it if you want."
Absolutely. I, I'm definitely pushing for more structured training. We do require daily training. Regardless of what form it may be, EMS, maybe fire operations, ladder operations, we do some form of training.
Okay.
But, yeah, absolutely, and the chiefs are also instituted a standard across the board that everyone will be one-two, everybody will be a minimum of an EMT, so on and so forth. Absolutely wanna maintain that standard.
Okay.
And a minimum, maintain the monthly trainings. One of the other things I was looking at is, unfortunately, we, we lost one of our firefighters a few years ago. It kind of opened my eyes that where I was the sole EMS coordinator and there was a sole fire prevention officer, so on and so forth. I think, well, let me back up a little bit. What I've done after that, I have brought in one of the other firefighter paramedics, well, now a captain paramedic. Training him up for my job. So currently, we're both here, we're both okay. You know, if I'm not there, he can take over. If he's there, you know, vice versa. I think we need to definitely build some redundancy into the department. And that I would like to see spill over into training as well. And be more formalized, more standardized.
And what is your experience with pursuing grants? 'Cause I know that also is a rather extensive process.
Not in a long time, but I think grants need to be aggressively pursued. It has been a huge benefit to this department, and I think, again, given the current financial status anywhere, really, that they have to be aggressively pursued. Absolutely.
And what's your position on the, on the safer grant and kind of, are you sharing that we're getting some issues with getting money from the federal government?
No, 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 I'm just saying, just forecasting in general, with just the economy in general and the price of things for the fire service. Anything that's tagged fire, EMS, or police is insanely expensive.
Well, no, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, but, but right now that there, we're not getting a response from the federal government that we were anticipating on the safer grant that we...
So we, we have three rounds of payroll that have been submitted for the safer grant that we have not received reimbursement for. So we're about, about thirty thousand dollars in arrears on the grant.
And that definitely needs some attention.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why, again, sitting with, with Chief Carrico and looking at the, again, I'm so agreeing to this, looking at how he lays out the schedule and looking at ways, every dollar matters. And something he said to me is like, you know, when I, I may order a hose and I order it in May, it doesn't get delivered until October, but I've gotta have all the receipts, I've gotta have all my ducks in a row 'cause all that needs to be submitted. And if you don't, then, you know, he's like, I'm, I'm, A, I'm not getting the money that I have in the budget that, you know, that, I don't want to ever, he, he doesn't like having to bump into Christine and, and ask for money.
You don't wanna spill over to the, to the next fiscal year, et cetera, yeah.
And so those are things that I looked at. It was like, okay, I, this is an important role, and it's almost like you have to take a step back from being the frontline guy and being, as you said early on, you're more administrative than, you know, it's like, as you go up in any career, you know, the young sales rep can run ragged on the street and have a great time, but as they move up in their career, they are, they are removed from that element and now put in that management role, and it comes with huge responsibilities. And I know in the town of Medfield, having, having the budgets aligned is, especially what we have this year, we've got, asking the school for three hundred thousand dollars back.
Right.
Insurance was crazy high.
It's never been more evident. There's, needs to be a lot of attention to detail. No question.
If you were to rate yourself from one to ten on, on attention to detail in that manner?
Attention to detail's a ten. But you cannot do it alone. You know, again, I think having good officers, good support, and working with the committees, you can accomplish this.
And then, community relations. You know, the fire chief is the face to the public. How do you see that?
It's a lot more important nowadays, I think, than it ever has been. I am not a supporter of social media in any way, shape, or form, but I think it's been forced on everyone. And I think it needs to be controlled. But the point I'm getting to is there's a lot more exposure these days. And I think everybody needs to be very cognizant of that. You mentioned community relations. I've got some definite ideas for, again, this, this younger group that we've hired. They are very enthusiastic, very engaging, very public oriented, very well spoken. And I would like to, to speak to Gus's point earlier about keeping them from the downward spiral. I think if I keep them engaged, it will just keep them onward and upward motion.
So every department kind of goes through peaks and valleys, right? So right now, I think we're, we're at a peak, everything's looking great.
Absolutely.
But let me ask you, how would you address the public, how would you address public criticism or scrutiny of the department?
In regards to anything specific?
Well, it's, if you become chief in a year, so it's, there's, there's negative chatter about the department. And you're the face of the department. How would you, how would you address it if you, whether it's legit or not?
First and foremost, you need to gather your facts. Gather all your information. Find out, is it relevant? Is it pertinent? Is there anything to this? And then address the people that are involved or being criticized within the department. And then once that's ascertained, determined, any remediation, punitive issues, and then direct it to the public, face to face. Say if it was an individual, I would gladly meet with them and offer them a solution. Take it from there. It's, I, it's kind of a broad question, but, you know, case by case type of thing.
Okay.
But if you can be proactive and prevent that from happening and have a good public relation, transparency, education, information, it probably won't even become an issue.
Well, and you, you know, what made me think that question is when you talk about social media. Because the least favorite thing I like to hear is when somebody's like, oh, I read it on Facebook. And so that makes it true. I mean, you got to be kidding me, right? But you can get people just putting stuff out there. They type, they hit return, send, and now everyone thinks it's fact. And that's why, you know, that can happen, and you would be leading the department. And it's, and you just said you're not a social media person, so, nor am I that heavily into it, so I get that. But it's still, you've, it's, it's, you got to navigate it.
It's very clear, and if I'm understanding your statement correctly, it's, I think it's very clear and understood very well amongst the members of the department, do not engage. It's just, it's trouble. I've seen nothing good come of it. And I just, no. Don't do it.
So my three, you know, Gus had his things he was talking about. Like, I look at budgeting and resource management is going to be key in this role, right? And, and understanding how to manage budgets, how to understand resource management, moving into training, training and professional development. And I've heard you, the answer, your answer from the other two select board members, it's, it's essential, right? Because technology and techniques change every day.
Nonstop.
And so how will you try to stay ahead of that?
I think networking with the area chiefs is first and foremost. Find out what everybody else is doing and as well as bring your own ideas to the other area chiefs. It's, in this business, what I have learned over those years is, again, networking. Talk to everybody, see what's, what's working, what's not working. How have you, have you had this problem before? Yes, we have. Okay, how did you solve it? That's if you run into something new. And vice versa, they'll come to us for that type of thing. And like anything, just follow the trades or follow the industry and maintain the technology as best as possible. Like, this may sound miniscule, but with the advent of battery technology, we've converted a lot of our tools over to battery operation. There's still a handful of gasoline operated equipment that we have that I would like to see phased out because of reliability, because of having to maintain fuel. Whereas the battery technology and the dependability of the battery operated tools has become, it's just exponentially grown over the years. And that increases portability as well. And cost, and reduces maintenance. So just as a small example.
And then my other thing, and I asked this question already in terms of, you know, public relation, public relations and public safety. You are the face of the fire department.
Absolutely.
You, you will be the one that people turn to when we're looking for safety recommendations, whether it be home, school, commercial. So if you sit here tonight, give me what you believe one of your greatest strengths is if you were to start as chief tomorrow, and what you believe one of your biggest weaknesses will be. And in that weakness, how would you try to include that over time?
As far as strength, I think I carry fairly, very strong, healthy respect from the people that I work with, members of the department. As far as a weakness goes, defer back to what Gus had mentioned earlier in being able to step back, but not being afraid to jump in, in switching cats, switching over to an administrative position. It's kind of going from a hands-on to a non-handson position. And it's almost like you're, you know, letting, you almost have to let go and let it go to the people that are below you to run, you know, the captains, the lieutenants, the paramedics, let them do their thing. And if you trust them and you train them up properly, you don't have a problem with that. That would be the weakest point.
And since we didn't know what the other person was going to ask, I want to make sure, before we run out of time, Peter, is there any question that you didn't get a chance to ask, you didn't hear us ask?
Oh, well, I've got plenty of questions, but no, I'm all set.
Okay, just want to make sure, Gus?
No, but were, were we going to let the?
No, we are, and I, I just, before I took these, I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so question from the audience.
All right.
Why do you want to be fire chief?
I'm going to go back to my earlier answer, where I had the distinct pleasure of being hired as the first full-time firefighter in the town of Medfield. Chief Carrico's retirement came unexpectedly, in my eyes, anyway. I thought this would be a fantastic way to bring your career to a full circle. And that would give me an opportunity to make some of the subtle changes that I see, as I mentioned earlier, increasing the meetings, the trainings. I would like to implement some physical changes within the department. I would like to open up the public aspect that you spoke to earlier by engaging the younger people, the newer people, rather. Keep them engaged and institute some public programs. I have a handful of them in mind based on each's personality to fulfill, you know, a task which I know they would readily jump into. But I'd like to see some of that come around.
Any questions for the select board?
I got to ask, can, can I ask one question? We haven't asked it in, you're going to retire in two, is it mandatory retirement, two years? What's, what?
Mandatory is 65.
65, so it's not in two years. Okay, so that was bad information on my part. Okay, you've just answered my question.
All right.
Yeah, we're not looking to?
What my real, what my real question is, how long are you envisioning that you would do this job? And it sounds, it sounds like it would be through at least one contract, one three-year contract. I won't, I'm not pushing you for it. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Jeff, thank you so much for your decades of service to this town. We appreciate you.
It's been very fast. It's been amazingly quick.
Thank you very much.
I'm with you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Thank you, yes, I'll text her right now. Nothing online, okay, that's good. All right, so we'll ask the same, same question you asked of him, let me show you, ask the next candidate. Go make sure the same questions you asked of him will ask you, you ask of the next candidate.
Oh, yeah.
I've got my Pete questions marked, so I don't ask those.
Oh, yeah, if you can, turn it off. We're just going to turn the air conditioning off.
On or off?
We're going to turn it off so we can hear.
Okay.
At least a little better. There we go.
It is so much better when that's off.
I think I heard at the energy committee meeting last week that the town hall is on a one-pipe system or something, so you can only have the heat or the air conditioner turned on at any given time. That you have to switch between the two or something.
Guaranteed, as soon as I turn the heat on, we will have a heat wave in the hall, guaranteed.
Good evening, how are you, Bill?
Greetings, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so as we kick this off, if you just want to take a moment and introduce yourself, we know who you are, but the people that are behind you, people that are online, people that are listening, that would give you a chance for you to introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Bill DeKing. Third-generation firefighter. I grew up in upstate New York. In 1995, when I turned 18, I joined the local fire department up there. Went to college for a couple of years, and when I got out of college, I decided I didn't want to do what I went to school for and wanted to pursue a fire career. So I got my EMT, got certified in, as a firefighter in New York State. And in 2001, I moved to Massachusetts, became a 911 dispatcher. And I call firefighter in Medway. And then in 2005, I was lucky enough to be hired full-time. Since then, I've became a captain, fire prevention captain. And here we are today.
Excellent, welcome, thank you so much. So what we're going to do is, Pete's going to ask a few questions, Gus will ask some questions, ask some questions. And certainly along the way, if you have any questions of us. And then we already have one question that I was asked to ask both candidates, so I will. But on that note, we'll kick it off, Pete?
Sure.
Thank you so much for coming, Bill. So the first thing that I'm going to ask about is give you a chance to talk about the, the minimum requirements. I see it says on my sheet that you're supposed to have a bachelor's degree.
Yes, sir. I am currently enrolled at Anna Maria College for my bachelor's degree in fire science. I am three and a half weeks into my last course. It ends the end of April. And I walk across the stage on March 12th.
Excellent.
Thirty, thirty years in the making, but, yeah, so in March, I'm sorry.
May.
May. I'll have, I'll have my degree. And then in September, I start my master's degree in fire science. And that'll take about a year.
Okay, great, thank you. In, in 2017, we went outside the department to hire a fire chief. What have you done since then to prepare to be the next chief?
So during that process, I had lots of conversations with a lot, lots of members in, within the department. And we brought in Chief Hollingshead. And one of the first things Chief Hollingshead did was he sat down with every member of the department, which is something that I intend to do if I'm fortunate enough to, to be appointed. But I had a long conversation with him about what I needed to do and how I needed to prepare, prepare myself. And he sent me in the right direction. So I had my New York State certification, but I never went and got my Massachusetts certification as a firefighter. I was just operating under the New York State training and some local training. So the first thing I had to do was go get certified as a firefighter in Massachusetts. So I went out and got my Massachusetts firefighter certification. And then I went and got my instructor's certification. Then I got my fire officer's certification. Then I got my fire prevention officer certification. So I have, currently I have my Mass firefighter one and two. I have my fire officer one. I just finished the fire officer two class last week. My instructor one, my instructor two, fire prevention officer one, fire prevention officer two. I'm certified to go into the schools and teach the safe program in the schools. Those are just, those are the, those are the key classes I've taken since 2017. I have a bunch of other smaller classes, but all those are the national certifications and state certifications that, that, that Chief Hollingshead and I identified. And I went back and got my degree. Knock on wood, in, in five weeks, hopefully, I get my degree. So, yeah, so that's, that's the short, short answer to that.
Great, thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges of the department and on the horizon for, for the ambulance service? What do you see?
There's a few, there's a few big issues that are on the horizon that, that we're going to be facing. One of the biggest ones that I foresee is, as you know, we're now, now in OSHA state. And OSHA is, is revamping some of the regulations. And they're still in the draft stage, so we don't have any hard facts on what, what they're going to come out with. But one of the, one of the requirements is that every member of the fire department is certified in Massachusetts to the one and two standard that I spoke about. We currently have, currently have a few members who are not certified. So those members are going to have to become certified if, if these regulations come down. And that's, that's just one of many regulations. It's, they're talking about minimum training, physical fitness tests, a whole lineage of things. But that's going to be a major issue that we're going to have to tackle when that comes. Another issue is, excuse me, attracting new members. So we, we currently have a fantastic group of members on the department. Our department has, in the last 10 years, has done a complete 180. I want to say complete 180 because we've always had a great department. But we, we've, we've brought in several new members since 2017, 2018, when we went ALS and then the safer grant. The young group of firefighters we have now are amazing. These, these kids, they, they want to be here, they want to train, they want to learn. And I just finished my fire officer two class with, with two of the new members. One, one has three years on the job, one has two years on the job. It's amazing that they're, they're out, out there doing that. But we need call members. Call members are going to be the hardest, that's, that's one of the hardest points that we're going to have is attracting new call members. We have 10 very dedicated call members right now. And, and we need to keep them, and we need to attract more. So how can we attract more call members? Those are just a couple of the.
Any ideas about how to get more call members?
Yeah, so I, I do have a couple. So currently, we, I run a, I run the fire cadet program at the high school. We've had an issue in the last couple of years attracting students to come in. And I have two, two this year that we're, we're kind of revamping the program for a little bit and trying to get them come in on a weekend instead of a weeknight and maybe get one or two more. But continue that and push that program more. Another thing I wanted, wanted to push is an adult cadet program. So somebody, because right now the cadet program is anybody in the high school. So ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, whatever. We do an adult cadet program. We target those 20, 30, 40-somethings who, maybe they don't know what we do or how we do it or why we do it. They're interested, they come down, we put them through the paces, they see what we do, maybe they want to join the department. Or maybe they have a child who's interested in the fire department, the fire service. They don't know if they should encourage them because they just simply don't know enough about it. So they come down, they see the culture that we have, they see what we do, they see how we do it. And then they'll feel comfortable enough to encourage their child to do it. That's just a couple of ideas on that.
Yeah, those are great ideas. What does customer service mean to you in terms of the department and as a chief?
Customer service means listening to the community, seeing what the community wants, seeing what, what the community is looking for from the department. We're not just there behind those closed doors and open them up and go out and help somebody when they need it. We need to be out in, in the community, we need to be talking to the community, we need to be very community forward. And being community forward is going to let them feel more comfortable talking to us, feel more comfortable approaching us. Currently, I go to the senior center a few times a year and sit and, one of my favorite programs is coffee with a captain. programs is coffee with a captain. And there's, there's no, there's no scheduled program. Let's just go, sit there and talk to the members. Sometimes they have questions about medications, sometimes they have questions about trip and falls, sometimes they just want to chat about what's going on in the community, or talk about the loaf of bread that they're picking up. So, that, to me, that's customer service, is being out in the community, listening to what people are saying, and addressing those and working toward helping them.
Bill, how about teamwork? How are you able to affect that in your current position and how would it be different as a chief?
In my current position, I'm the captain of group two. So I have three members on my group, and it's my job to make sure that they, they know their job, they know how to do their job, they know when to do their job, and that they can do it together. When we show up on a scene, we have to get off the truck with this ambulance, the fire truck, whatever that may be, and we have to go to work. So the team has to know what they're doing. It's, it's like, I played college football, and I was an offensive lineman, but I had to know what the wide receivers were doing or what the quarterback was doing because we needed to work together. Same thing happens in the, in the station, is we all need to work together and, and for one goal, and that goal is, it may be minimizing emergency, or it could just be delivering the customer service to the community.
Can you maybe discuss your experience in dealing with individuals who demonstrate a lack of performance?
So, I, I recently did have to have a conversation with one, one of the members at the station. I knew, I knew this member knew what was expected of them, and I knew that they knew how to do what was expected of them. It just, it wasn't getting there. So, I decided it was more of a conversation with this, with this member. It wasn't a discipline, it wasn't yelling, it wasn't screaming, it was just a conversation and asking him, you know, what's going on? Does he have an issue at home? Does he have an issue at work? Does he have an issue with one of his coworkers? I don't, I don't know what's going on in all of their lives all the time. So, have the conversation with them, see why they're deficient, and put a plan in place to get them to where they need to be.
Okay. Can you maybe describe a specific initiative that you have led or would propose that would enhance the collaboration between the call and the full-time firefighters?
So I've led several department trainings where we do work together. But it needs to go beyond that. It needs to go beyond just the working together on a scene or working together at, you know, at a drill. It needs to be more of a collaboration, whether it's at Medfield Day when everyone gets together and does something along that line, or bring back the chicken barbecue. It could, you know, that's a great event. Community events where we get all the department together and, and we work together, not in an emergency situation and not in a training situation, just in a person, a friendly situation.
What steps would, well, maybe you just answered that, to integrate the distinct cultures of the call and the firefighters. Is there anything else that you could add to that, or is that it?
It, it would be, it would be on me to treat every member the same. The call members are just as important as the full-time members, and if I was to treat the full-time members differently than how I treat the call members or vice versa, all that's going to do is drive a wedge between something that I feel we have worked hard to try to bridge that, that gap. It's something that I need to be conscious of and I need to be aware of, but essentially treating everybody fairly, treating them the same is the way to go.
Can you maybe share an experience where you were able to improve the relationship between the call and the full-time firefighters?
It's just simply, after a call, everyone stands around and talks and, and, you know, we, we all just kind of, just chew the fat for a little while on the apparatus floor. We have some members that'll just go upstairs and, some full-time members that'll just go upstairs and just be like, okay, call's done, I'm going to hide, and, or I'm going upstairs and finish doing whatever I was doing before. I've encouraged my, my group, stay on the floor, have those conversations. People are talking about their dogs, they're talking about their family, they're talking about what they're doing next weekend. We, that's, that's how you build a community. We talked about that sitting at the kitchen table, you know, in the morning having coffee. Everybody needs to do that, whether it's on the apparatus floor or whatever. But it's, it's keeping people together.
Okay, sounds very wise to me, thank you. That's it for me, thank you very much.
We'll start with the basic question. Why do you want to be the fire chief?
Because my dad was fire chief, to be honest with him. So the department I grew up in in upstate New York, my father's been a longtime fire chief there. I grew up at the fire station, that's all I've ever known is the fire station. Like I said, I went to school and decided that, that what I was going, I was going to school for nursing, and I decided that's not for me. Came back, and, like I said, fast forward 10 years, I was lucky enough to be hired here full-time. And it's, it's just in my DNA to be, to be the leader, to encourage, to teach, to educate, and be the one that people like to turn to. I was captain of the football team, and, and I've been lucky enough to have some very good mentors and very good role models to look up to, between my father, Chief Kingsbury, Chief Hollingshead, now Chief Carrico, and that's what I want to be. I want to be that guy that the next generation wants to look to and say, this is where I want to go, and I want to help those guys get there.
This might be a hard question, so you either need to play for time or you say, I don't know, it's legit.
Okay, hold on.
You just mentioned four chiefs, including your father, that you know, that you've known, worked with, learned from. If you're the, if you're a chief, you're going to take the best that you can from all of them.
Yes, sir.
Can you distill down the three most important things you would want people to find in you and a chief? Based on everything you've thought about, every place you've gone, the three most important things you would want someone like you, coming in with you as the chief, to learn from you and take away?
You need to have that presence. You, you need to remain calm. When, when, when things are going sideways, you need to be calm. If, if you're not calm, they're going to see you not calm, and they're going to start to panic a little. And when you start to panic, that's when somebody gets hurt. And, so you need, you need to have that presence, you need to remain calm, you need to be confident in your abilities. Another one would be, just be honest with people. If someone does something well, praise them, praise them for it. Somebody does something bad, well, it's, might be a hard conversation, but you have to have that conversation. And if you have that honest conversation with people, they're going to respect you more than, than if you just brushed it under the table or, or kind of tried to sugarcoat it. Just be honest. And people learn from their mistakes. And the four gentlemen I just spoke to, I learned lots of good things from them, also learned some things not to do from all four of them. So, and, I guess the honesty one is the biggest one. Third one, be reliable, be trustworthy. Once, once you lose your word, I mean, as a fire chief or just, just as a man, you, if I lose my word, it's no, it's no good to anybody.
Good list. Must have worked for some good fire chiefs. So, I'll, I'll switch gears a little bit here. I had a, I was trying to think about fire, what's different about a fire chief from being on the staff somewhere in the department? And I, I came up with a framework which might not be a very good one. I'll tell you what it is, and the question I'll be leading up to is, if these four things make any sense to you at all to even respond, which of these would you see as, as you step into the fire chief's role? Which of these areas would probably be the one that you would say, this is the one I'm probably going to have to do the most backfilling on? So, just to set this up, the four, the four things I had, one, I called it business management, but what I'm getting at is, a fire chief has to come before us, before town administration, before the warrant committee, has to work on budgets, has to think about how the, how the department is viewed by the public, and so it's all that stuff that's got nothing to do with putting out fires or making rescues.
Yep.
The second one, I think would be the easiest one for you just because of your experience, but I called it fire operations management. In other words, when something comes up, you don't want a chief who's not sure what to do about it. Probably don't want captains that'd be not sure, but that one's probably the easy, the one you might have the deepest expertise in. The third one is people leadership, which is, as a chief, not only am I, you know, overseeing a department, not only am I making sure we don't do bad things, but I'm also setting a tone for the whole department that will influence the way people see the department, how they behave, how they deal with each other. And then the fourth one is just basic knowledge or expertise. And what I'm getting at there is things like, do I know how to develop a budget? Do I know how to negotiate a contract? Do I understand what labor laws are so I know what I can and can't do, that kind of stuff? If that framework makes any sense to you?
Yep.
Which one do you think would be the one you're going to have to do the most, you know, make the most effort to fill in what you need to be, to be a chief?
Can I pick a little bit from each category?
Sure.
So, it's developing, developing the budget, working through the budget, what legally can you do and what you can't do? That, that would be something I would, I would lean on Christine and Frank and the police chief and neighboring towns' chiefs. It would be something I would lean on, on them a little bit for. The business sense, I, I'm a small business owner, so I currently work through, we have our own little budget, it's not a million seven budget, but it's, you know, we have our own budget, we work through it. So developing that plan, I feel, I feel pretty confident with that. But negotiating a contract, I've, that, I've said across from Pete and Christine and I have a long history of negotiating contracts.
Yes, we do.
So, I'm pretty confident with that. It would, it would be more the, just working through the budget and exactly how the line items work and, and, and looking toward the future with the capital projects and planning that 10, even 20 years out. So, if I had to be honest, it would be more along those lines.
If you were to become chief, and this, I'm not, I'm not asking a question to throw a current chief under the bus here. If, if you were to become chief, what would be sort of at the top of your list of the thing you would most like to do to have a positive impact on improving the department?
I would, I would sit down and have a conversation with every single member of the department, similar to what Chief Hollingshead did, Chief Carrico did to, to an extent as well. But I, I would have that conversation with them, see what their goals are, see what their, their, their plans are, see what they want from their career, and how I can help them reach that in their career. I'd reach out to neighboring fire chiefs. I know most of the fire chiefs around us, I've come up through the ranks with, with most of them. I've already talked to a few of them, talked to a few of them today even. But I'd build that relationship with, with them a little bit. Not repair the relationship, but just, just improve it. So they, they would feel more comfortable calling us for mutual aid, so it would up our ambulance runs and, et cetera. I'm good.
All right, excellent. All right. So, as I said to the previous candidate, so this is my first term as select board member, so I'm wrapping up my first term.
This is my first interview.
All right, there we go, I like this. So we're starting off good here. And, and so, just in the last few months, I've had the pleasure of doing the collective bargaining with your team, which was awesome.
Yep.
Right? We're just wrapping up with our police, which is fantastic, and to your point, this is the first time I've had a chance to actually do an interview here at a select board meeting. And what I did do to prepare for this is I actually spent last Thursday afternoon with Chief Carrico.
Okay.
And, and I said to him, this is the first time I'm doing this, so any pointers. And you know what he brought me to is a spreadsheet. And he's got many of them on that computer.
He sure does.
And it was fascinating, the level of detail that he has, and if people in this town don't know it, oh my goodness, is he, he, he does not want to have to come to Christine and even ask for $100, let alone $1,000. So knowing that those are shoes you're going to have to fill, have you had a chance to shadow him? Have you, have you had a chance to embrace that system? Any feedback, comments?
Yeah, so I, I, I've worked through over the last few years a lot of, a lot of his spreadsheets, I'm not going to say all of them because I know there's a lot of them there. But, but I helped, you know, we worked through the budget, he helped explain things to me about the budget. He explained how he, payroll's obviously the biggest portion of the budget. He explained to me how he, he charts it out, and monthly he goes in and deducts it from the, from what's budgeted and, and works through it. And, and my biggest question to him was how he predicts call members' pay? Because you, you can predict your full-time staff pay, and then you have your vacation and your sick time, and you can, you can budget for that because you kind of have an idea how much that's going to be. We don't know how many callbacks we're going to have. We don't know if we're going to have 50 for the year, if we're going to have 100, if we're going to have 200. You, you just don't know. You don't know if you're going to have a day like we had just over a year ago where we had, we had the windstorm and rainstorm here in town. We had 102 calls that day. I was, I was, I was a shift commander for that, and it was crazy. But we had the call members back for the entire day. So, not just an hour, hour or two here, they were back for 10, 12, 15 hours. So, how do you predict that? You, you can't. So you've got to use statistics. So you, you look at history, you look at member A and C, how many, historically how many calls he came back at. Member B, historically, and so on and so on, and take your best stab in the dark. So he's, he's worked through that with me, he's, he's worked through, I presented the budget to the warrant committee. And I sat with him and, and the member from the warrant committee, he, what was his name?
Oh, Pete. Pete Michelson?
Was it Pete?
I think it was Pete.
So anyway, but I, I sat with the two of them and worked through the budget, and he explained line by line by line, and, and helped me through, worked through that. He's, he's been showing me a lot over the last few years, and, and I think, I think I have a grasp on some of them. But I, I now use spreadsheets on, for, for a lot of my fire prevention stuff that I do as well, the safe program and the senior safe program, and working through that budget on a much smaller basis, but...
Well, and I saw on your cover letter that you were involved in the SAFER grant, because grants are another way to bring in dollars that, they're not guaranteed, but it certainly does help with the overall budget.
Yeah, so, so the safe grant, well, there's a safe and senior safe, and then there's a safer, so they're, they're different grants. So, the last four years, I've written and I've applied for the safe and the senior safe grant through the state, which we've, we've been granted every year, and we're still waiting on this current year, they haven't released that yet. But what that does, it gives me a budget for, to be able to go into the schools, do fire prevention in the schools with, with the students, and then go to the senior center and speak to the seniors. We do a lot of trip and fall education, and we buy handrails and slip mats, and we have a program we call Sand for Seniors, which we give seniors a bucket of sand with the DPW, and they can sprinkle it so they don't slip and fall.
Yep.
So then, so I've written those, I manage all that money, and I file all the paperwork for that. The SAFER grant to hire the four firefighters, when we were getting ready to write it for this year, the chief brought it to me and said, here, here's what we used last year. You work through it, I'm going to work through it. We had one other member that helped us work through it, and we all came together. And then we wrote it, and then I did a lot of punctuation and editing, but, so I helped them with that, and then came together with that and sent it off, and we were fortunate enough to get, to get that grant this year. And just a month or so ago, FEMA released a, another, another round of the AFG grants. So, because of the size of the town, we're eligible for $9,500. So I wrote, I wrote that grant, I submitted it, we're still waiting on that.
Okay.
I wrote that to, to get new, new helmets, new boots to kind of go along with the capital project that we have planned.
Okay. And I was asked to start, and Christine gave me a heads up. So we, right now, we're, we're not getting a response from the federal government for the payments, and you're nodding your head, like?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's not good. Yeah, that's, that's something we're going to have to work through with, with the government. They, from what I understand, they, they're still working through reviewing their policies, and, and we're waiting on that.
Okay.
We're, we have to maintain the staffing. If, if we don't, we're in violation of that contract, so... Something we're going to have to work through.
And something I saw on your resume, which I found impressive, was just all of the certifications you've entered. So needless to say, as chief, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm sensing that training and you've got people, you've said already, some of the young guys coming in, they're already stepping up. But explain to me the importance of training and what you'd like to see as you can move forward if you're selected as chief.
Yeah, so training, it's twofold, as explained to me. Training, you need to do training to get pieces of paper that says you know what you're doing. But training also, it shows your initiative, it shows what you want, it takes your time, it takes your energy, it takes your money, it takes your effort. It shows to me, when I just had those two newer members at the Fire Officer Two class with me, it shows me what they want, it shows me who they are, it shows me their work ethic. Same thing with other members. If you have a 20-year member who doesn't have some of these certifications because they just didn't want to do them or a two-year member who's got multiple certifications, it shows me their work ethic. And work ethic is a lot. Do a lot of watching and just seeing the members working or not working or how they interact with each other. But these classes, they build that, they build that teamwork, they build that community relations. I just went down to, in November, I was lucky enough to go down to the National Fire Academy to take a community risk reduction class. And I met fire chiefs and captains from all over the country. And I still keep in touch with a handful of them, just, one of them reached out to me today and sent me a text, we're lucky today. So it's not only the knowledge you get, it's the community you build, it's the knowledge base, it's that being able to reach out and be like, hey, I have this going on, what, how did you handle it? Or how would you handle it? Or networking, but.
Well, and you said something just now, I mean, if you're selected as chief, you are the face of the fire department, you are the face of the public. How would you handle it?
I embrace it. I, I'm fortunate enough to have the position as fire prevention captain where I'm in the community, I'm going into people's homes, I'm talking to people. Going to do inspections at their house, I'm replacing smoke detectors for the seniors, I'm doing home safety assessments for the seniors. I'll go to the senior center and talk with them. I embrace that, that's what I want. I want to be out in the community, I want our members to be in the community and that's one thing I would definitely push for. Open the garage doors, the kids walk by for, every day that one of the daycares walk by with their, they got their little daisy chandeliers walking down the street. We have rolls and rolls of stickers, it takes two seconds to hand them a sticker. Make the kid's day. And they're going to go home and they're going to say that to their mom and dad and, you know, it's good PR, that's all it is. But I embrace, I embrace the face of it.
And you just brought up, so PR, right? So any department, you have the highs and lows, right? You had a great year and then you might have something that goes sideways. So, you know, how would you handle that if you were having people talk negatively about the department, whether it's fact or fiction, it comes back to you?
I would invite a conversation, just have an open, honest conversation and ask them, be blunt, be honest. Tell them, why did this happen? Why do you see it the way you see it? How can we work through it? How can we address the issue? Is there an internal issue that I don't know about? Is there miscommunication that someone gave bad information? Is there a misunderstanding along the way? Or did we simply screw up? And if we screwed up, own it, we have to own it and just be honest and own up to it. If there's some miscommunication, let's have that conversation, let's work our way through it. But you can't shy away from it. If you shy away from it, then, oh, they don't want to hear it. And then you just bury it and then, and then you, that builds and builds and builds. And if you can address it, take care of it right away, it won't build and it's better for the town and better for the department.
Absolutely, yeah. Because as I sit here and when we go through these discussions, I look at a couple of areas that to me are just so important. And it's, you know, I've already talked about the budget and the finances, right? I mean, you go into a different set of shoes as chief. You have to back away from being the day-to-day guy and you're, as Chief Carrico was saying to me the other day, he spends more time in front of his computer than he ever imagined. And that can be a bit daunting if you want to be on the floor all the time and you realize in this role, that's not the option, right? But I sent, just listening to you now, I didn't realize how much time we had spent with Chief Carrico, which, so that's fantastic. So you've seen the level of detail he has on, it's impressive.
I spent more time in that office in the last four or five years than I have in the previous 15, so.
That's fantastic. And then.
For good reasons, huh?
Thank you for the clarity.
No, so I mean, I heard Pete ask some questions about leadership and I'm certainly asking about budgeting and resourcing and training and professional development. And then, you know, you are, you're the community relations and it's, I love what you just said about when the little kids go by and you put a sticker. I see Officer Haynes do that with Nova. I mean, he is out there breaking that barrier of a police officer, a fireman, they are your friend.
He'd be open to getting a fire dog if that was something the town was interested in.
I knew that was coming.
A little Dalmatian around town. And so I don't want to rush this in the sense that, Pete, Gus, do you have any other questions from your end that I might not have asked?
We'll make it, I realize Jeff's not here to hear it. Just a comment on what we've heard tonight is, I'm delighted to hear and see that we have candidates for the chief from inside the fire department that are as strong as they are. And in your case, one of the things that came through from the years what you're thinking of, the perspective, which I think is important.
Well, and then certainly, do you have any questions of us?
Yeah. How's the board envision the department evolving under new leadership, whether it be myself? If I'm fortunate enough to get the job.
I envisioned learning more. I didn't understand until we heard from Captain Bonati tonight about the different groups, the four groups. I had never been told that before, so I'm fascinated. I'm learning more about your department, I'd like to learn more.
I invite you down to come down and spend the day, in the afternoon, come to the adult cadet program.
I once told Chief Kingsbury that, because my office is on North Street and I see the engines going by to fires and I once told him that I feel guilty not going and helping at the fire and he basically said to me, that's okay.
Quite often we get people who want to help, which is fantastic to see people come out and want to help. But like I explained, we have teamwork that we have built. And I know I got this person doing this, that person doing that, whether I have to tell them to do something or.
There's so much training that you guys have, I mean, you guys are, I mean, it's a profession, you've got expertise that, you know, we would just pass a bucket, so.
For me, there's a couple of things come to mind for me. One is, one piece of fire department operations that's really stuck with me when we get the annual statistics is to realize you very much are more of an emergency services business. The ambulance is the call that you get more than the fire, but you have to be able to do the fire too. So when you talk about where things evolve, there's, I find myself thinking about that and going, it's a fire department, but actually in some ways it's an emergency services department. And among the things it does is it puts out fires when you have them. But the real things that have had an impact on me in terms of what I see in the town, it's the fact that somebody can have a heart attack somewhere and there's a response within two minutes of the call. And there's enough going on while the patient is en route to the hospital that it makes the difference on whether they make it to the hospital or not and how they recover. And I just contemplate the, I don't know, it's not quite right, the gunslinger quality that fire, the members of the fire department have to have to be able to deal with any situation, come up very decisively, very quickly. And that's one piece that sticks in my mind. Another piece that sticks in my mind is, I've been here for 30 years now in town. The town has always loved the police department and the fire department. I think it's fair to say that the myth of loving the fire department and the police department outlived some of the justification for that if I go back a few years. And I'm not disparaging anybody who's still here, I'm getting at some who aren't. And my perception is that both the police and the fire over the past eight or 10 years has earned back every bit of what used to be the reason for the town to love these two departments and more. And that's to the credit of the leadership that's in both departments and I don't mean just the one person at the top. It takes a true leadership team to do that. So that's another one. The other thing that I think about is, I can't help but worry that at some point in the future, towns like ours will face threats where the cohesion and the synergy between fire and police and the ability for fire and police to deal with wholly unexpected events that are potentially disasters is a greater and greater priority for a town like, as peaceful and quiet as we are, it's going to be a bigger deal for towns like ours. And I'm feeling like we have two departments, I'm not saying you're dealing, I hope you're not, I hope we don't have a reason for you to need to deal with that yet. But I think there's a cohesion and professionalism and energy enthusiasm that is in both departments now that I can't help isn't going to be a big factor in making sure that, at least in comparison to other towns like ours, we, whenever, I hope it never happens, but when that happens, we will be better prepared to deal with it than most.
We do work very well with the police department. There was a period of time where I'd come to work and I'd be like, who's that patrolman? I've never seen that person before. Fortunately, things have changed. We're great with them now, we work great together. They have a fantastic department on their side of the building. Like I explained earlier, we have a fantastic department on our side of the building. We're friendly, we laugh, we joke, sometimes we have dinner together or lunch together, but that's key. Can I just expand on one other thing you mentioned? So you pointed to the two arms of the department, the EMS and the fire. I'd like to add in a third that I think is just as important. It's the fire prevention and, or basically what we call it is community risk reduction. So we focus on how can we prevent things from happening? So we actively try to put ourselves out of work, which is a great thing to have. So programs like the Sand for Seniors and the smoke detectors and the slip and fall programs, we're looking at data, we're looking at what portions of our community need the most help and what issues do they have that we can try to address before it becomes a bigger issue? So to me, that's where the future of the department's going. It's going to be more in that community risk reduction. We're always going to have the ambulance calls, we're always going to have the fire calls, the car accidents, we're always going to have those. But we need to focus on that, building out that community risk reduction program.
Thanks, I got it, yes.
And I'll just echo what you were just saying. I think to keep the department cohesive, right? I've been talking with Chief Carrico, you know, you have your full-time firefighters and then you have your call firefighters. And in past, I'm going to go back quite a few years, there was tension. And I'm sensing that that has, it's getting less and less tense and that's so important, all right? Because as you were saying, we're getting new call firefighters is going to be important as we move forward. So making sure that the person we choose to lead, leads by example, leads with professionalism, leads with the skill set, and you said this in the opening part of your interview, which I admire very much, is you looked at the people that you've worked under over your career. And in my opinion, a person that picks his strengths from the ones they've worked under and also recognized what you don't want to be. That might work for a person, you know, for Joe, it's not going to work for me and I've seen what it can do to the morale. So knowing that you're going in looking to do that and thinking ahead of what I want this department to look like, you want to earn the respect, you don't demand the respect, certainly with what you've been doing over the years, you've earned the respect. So I think it's imperative that we continue with that, that we call it mojo. You know, the ALS program, something that Chief Carrico has honed in on extensively. Actually, again, to prepare for tonight's meeting, I watched the select board meeting back in 2018. And, you know, he explained, you know, he wants to leave it better than he found it. And I think if he's watching tonight, if he watches this later in the week, he can absolutely positively sit at home and say, I left that department better than I found it.
I agree 100%.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Absolutely, it's building out that succession plan, identifying the members, building them up, the members that want to be there, the members who want to do it and the members who can do it and helping them along the way and having, that one conversation I had with Chief Hollings said, blew me away. And it flipped my career on its head. And I just, that's what I want to be for the younger generation that we have there now.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone in the audience? Jeff, yours got answered sooner. All right, anything else from you?
No, we covered all my questions I had.
I thank you very, very much for.
I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Thanks for all your service.
No worries.
Do we pick this back up like next week to?
We do, no, you're discussing right now and appointment this evening, if you are ready. I'm ready. Pete, are you ready?
I'm good. Do you want me to start?
Yes, please.
So as, I guess the first thing I will say is that it's such a pleasure to have two such strong internal candidates. We don't have a lot of employees in the town of Medfield, so we don't always have the ability to hire from within. And I'm just really delighted to see two such wonderful men who have been working for the town for so long. I guess I come down with a preference for our latter candidate, Captain DeKing. And one of the things that, as I was listening to him, I was thinking back to something that has just made huge impression on me, which was the 60 Minutes show about the 9/11 attack. There was a French film team that was filming that, the NYPD FDNY that day. And they showed these leaders of the FDNY in the lobby of the World Trade Center and they were all calm as can be. And the chief was ordering a group of the men up in one of the towers. And that couldn't be a good assignment on that day and yet they just went up. And I could see Bill DeKing in that sort of a situation. He strikes me as that sort of a leader that would serve the town really well. So I just was, I'm very impressed with Bill.
I guess I'll give the answer first, but then I have some stuff I want to say. I agree. I think Bill was a good choice. I already said, one of the hard things when you actually have good candidates is you're going to tell one of those good candidates that you're not picking them. And Jeff and I have been friends for a long, long time because I've known him since our boys, we're both in Boy Scouts together, so. And as I said when he was here, I also have seen him in action. I should be correct, my wife has seen him in action. correct, my wife has seen him in action, I wasn't there. And he's a, he's a tremendous, tremendous professional. As we were talking and I sort of found myself leaning toward Bill, my head, half of my head was saying, yeah, but what is it we can do to make sure that this doesn't feel like a loss for Jeff? And how do we make sure that Jeff is still there? And I almost asked that question, so that's a pretty nasty question to ask somebody. If, if one of you doesn't get picked, you know, how are you going to make it work, you know, whether you, whether you were picked or not? I, I didn't ask that question. But I, but I do think that's something that I hope, if, I don't know that we can help, it's probably Fire Department, but when I asked Jeff the last question and he said, no, I'm not going anywhere, but, you know, retirement age, I just had bad information about that. So the point was, he's not looking, he's not looking to leave and he's a tremendously experienced guy who makes a difference on why we have the, the department we have. The reason that I found, I chose Bill over Jeff, as much as I like Jeff, what I just heard here, there were a couple of things I heard. One is I heard a bigger picture perspective thinking about the stuff that Bill naturally brought up was broader. It was not simply, well, this was my job and, oh yeah, I guess I'll have to think about those things. I'm not saying Jeff did that either, but Bill kind of surprised me at what was clear evidence of a lot of reflection and thinking about things. I was impressed that he had gone to, of all people, Chief Hollingshead, who was only a temporary chief here in the interim, but that he also had learned from all four of the chiefs that he's worked with, including his father. So that tells me that he's, he's thinking about things like that. When I asked him the question about what the three most important things are, as a leadership consultant, he, without being one, he nailed integrity, honesty. If you're going to be a good leader, those are things that people that you are leading need to know you're bringing to the table. And he said it in a way that made me think he really was bringing it to the table. He wasn't just giving me a book answer on that. So again, I think they both were tremendous candidates and I, I actually think there's an answer for the department that's a very powerful answer when you have people like that who are working together to make up a department work. And I, I hope that was, would be what comes out of it. But yeah, Bill was, I thought, the, the one that I would give the nod.
And I, I'll, I'll agree with both you guys. I thought Bill DeKing, I think the answer that he gave in terms of, it, it's what he's been around, it's what he's always strived to be, so he's staying true to that goal. I, the fact that he's been shadowing Chief Carrico and has been thinking, doing this for five years, that, that, that means something, right? And I know not everybody understands the spreadsheet, but if you sat with Chief Carrico and you saw his computer, and for, I was there for probably two and a half hours, and he, just what he, it's mind boggling, but it's the passion that he's put behind it and it matters as a taxpayer. It is saving us money by him thinking through how he can save dollars, what grants he can file, the fact that, that, that Bill has been doing these grants, some on his own, some supporting our current chief, again, as a resident, that's impactful. I think both candidates were fantastic, so as you just said, Pete and Gus, like, we can't have two chiefs, right? So we have to pick one. And it's a decision, again, you run for this role and you sit in these chairs, there's times you're going to make a decision that not everyone's going to be happy with, but I can confidently say tonight, hiring Bill DeKing as the next chief of Medfield, I think is a really good decision for the town. So do we need to vote on that?
Move that we point or select Bill the captain, Bill the King, to be the next chief of the Fire Department.
Gladly second that.
All right, and all those in favor?
Aye aye.
And that will be effective May 2nd.
Okay. On Chief Carrico. And obviously there's contract negotiation things that need to go on.
And also to point out that the, the appointment is pending, the full background investigation and successful contract negotiation.
Okay.
Okay, great. Both candidates.
Find print that gets read at the end of, you know, pharmaceutical commercials.
That's me. Both candidates are still here in the building. I think you should invite them both up to congratulate both of them and thank them for what happened.
I was unsure what happened.
If Marion could bring them both up. Thank you.
Is Marion going to tell the successful candidate?
I.
That we need to.
I think that she's going to leave that to you too.
Okay.
That's it. You will have to announce that you have voted.
Yeah, he wants to tell Bill that he's the next Fire Chief.
They've been sequestered, so there's, they don't know what's going on in the world right now.
Does everybody know the astronauts are home safe?
Say that one more time?
They already back?
Oh, they are.
Again, they are.
The astronauts are home. Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That and our, we have very strong girl sports teams, champions in basketball, hockey, the boys' hockey team just lost out at the end.
Girls won.
Girls, girls won in volleyball in the fall, basketball, hockey, and they're coming off of the state championship for lacrosse.
We should have the winners in, like we used to.
Oh, did they? I didn't get a chance to do that. Come on up here, gentlemen. Come on. Both of you, come on. We just want to take a moment as a board and just thank you genuinely, sincerely, thank you very much for coming in this evening. Appreciate everything you've done preparing for tonight, sitting here in front of us, answering all our questions. But we did as a board come to a decision on the next chief and we have selected Bill DeKing as the next chief of Medfield Fire Department. Right? But Jeff, if you, you can watch this, it's all recorded, you know, we think the world of you and we, it's like we can't have two, right? And we've picked one, but we look forward to seeing you support the chief and continue. You've been stellar with everything you've been doing in the department and this is not a knock to you, we had to pick one.
We're so appreciative.
Thank you so much. Please, thank you very much.
For a finger.
Oh, jeez. I wondered why you did that before, I didn't know if you had something gooey on it. All right, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Bill.
Are you, are you photographing this here? All right, let's get, all right, Bill, before we leave, we're going to get a group shot. Yeah, we'll get, we'll go front, I hate being behind the table.
I just thought of the captain's wife, so you won't welcome from joining us. We will have Captain DeKing back in for a formal ceremony.
Okay.
Move away from the screen so Christine's name isn't behind you.
No questions from the audience all the time, that was impressive.
Mrs. DeKing, congratulations.
All right, so to keep things on track here, next up is Trinity Financial to present and lead discussion of new conceptual design of the Medfield State Hospital water tower town parking lot. Let me send it to you. And I saw that Abby was on here earlier.
I just promoted her, let me.
There she is.
Hi, Abby.
Set up here. Crank the volume on the TV, one sec. All right, give it a shot, Abby.
Hi, everyone.
Much better, there we go.
Okay, great. I am also joined by my colleagues Dan Moore and Kevin McCarthy, who are also remote.
Abby, do you want us to promote them as well?
Yes, please.
Where'd the microphone come from? The devil.
Yes, right.
All right, there's Dan and Kevin and we'll be good to go. Good evening, Dan.
Yeah, I'm sending it to you right now.
Did we get Kevin? Is it Kevin McCarthy?
Yes.
I think we're having a little bit of an internet problem right now.
Maybe, do you want Abby to share it, maybe?
No, I'm sending it to you right now. I don't know if Abby will be able to.
You bring up the presentation, the new layout?
I'm just going to give the, the new layout, give me two seconds. Yeah, ask Abby if she can do it.
I can do it.
Okay, yeah, if you can do it, that would be great. Thank you.
Oh, I need.
Sharing power? Do you have a sharing power?
They just allowed you to share, so you should be able, but if not, obviously, no.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great, okay. So I don't know, Christine, if you want me to introduce what we met about and talked about, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, why don't you give the introduction and discussion?
Great. So last week, we met at the site on a community or publicly advertised community walk to look at a couple of boundaries of the site for our proposed subdivision plan, which we anticipate filing in the next week or so, and also met with neighbors in the Long Meadow neighborhood who were concerned about the proposed design of the water tower parking lot. And in response to this, we had the proposed corners of the parking lot staked out and walked the site with them, answering questions and hearing their concerns about the, the size, not the size of the parking lot, but the layout and how it felt very close to their homes. So we took the feedback that we heard and we were also given a proposed sketch to consider for the parking lot and we came back and with the attached version that you see here, this parking lot redesign does a couple of things. It maintains the 72 parking space, spaces that the originally proposed design has. We reduced the parking lot by approximately 18 feet from the neighbors' homes, so on the east side of the parking lot. We also extended it by approximately, sorry, it should be approximately 30 feet to the south side to accommodate a new parking layout. We maintained the wooden stockade fence as we had previously proposed and are proposing to increase the height from six feet to eight feet high. We also have proposed maintaining the vegetative buffer, which consists of plantings and trees and also creating a berm, so kind of raising the, the grade so that the parking lot is further obscured from the neighbors' homes. So this is the proposed drawing of the parking lot over the prior version and, yeah, this is what we have presented to the town as an alternative to the previous design.
Abby, quick question for you, you know with the, in the drawing where you have the box 72, are those EV parking spaces, is that what that little?
We do have some EV spaces on the site. Dan, can you speak to whether those in particular are the EV spaces?
They just look different than the other ones, that's all I was asking, unless those are handicapped.
Sorry, they are, and that transformer that's at the top of the parking lot, part of that reason that it's there is to support those EV car charging spaces, so yeah, there are some dedicated EV car charging spaces in there and those symbols essentially indicate which ones are our plan to be.
Okay.
Little block symbols.
And then you'll have handicap next to that, so that kind of that first row is EV and handicap?
It's, it looks like a combination, correct, yeah, with, with a few regular spaces.
Okay, just, just trying to decipher what's there, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, this, this looks like what we talked about on Tuesday, but I'll certainly go to Pete.
I just want to thank you, Abby and Dan, for, and Kevin, if he's around too, for being willing to revisit this parking lot and, and design it in a better way that works better for the neighbors and they all seem very content now, so thank you.
Gus?
Given that there's a few neighbors here, subject to them saying, no, you're wrong, Pete, I would agree. I appreciate, you know, in general, I'm appreciative of the collaborative relationship we've had with Trinity throughout the bumps, the inevitable bumps that'll come up along the way, and I, I hope that we come across that the town is trying to help Trinity do this project, but in this particular case, absolutely appreciate what Trinity has tried to do. I realize the neighborhood probably didn't hold a complete 100% election, but I think that we would be reasonable to say that the neighborhood's glad that the adjustments were made, they're made in a good direction. One point I'd make that I was particularly happy about is that not only did Trinity do the berm, which is what we talked about on the, on the site, but you actually took on board the other argument to have it be a narrower parking lot, you also were able to, you didn't make it all the way as narrow as some people might have tried to get, but you, you both, you listened and you brought it, you brought an option that we didn't actually talk about when we were there. So I appreciate that, Abby and Kevin and, and Dan.
Well, and Kevin's idea of the berm, I thought was just brilliant.
And I'll, I'll just echo those sentiments. I think it looks great and I, I love the way you guys did it. You can actually look and see what the original design was, so when we walked the property last Tuesday, there were orange markers that kind of jetted out. Those orange markers are now gone, it would be a straight line across and those additional spaces have been kind of bookended either end, so kudos to the entire Trinity team and the, obviously the contractors, looks good. And, and I'm going to, before I wind this conversation down, I see Jill, you're in the audience, you're nodding your head. Okay, where did? If you wouldn't mind, because we have the mic on the TV, just because it's really hard. And I know, I see Matt is one of the participants, so by all means, Matt, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to chime in or any comments.
Thank you, Jill Redasta, 36 Long Meadow Road, my property actually, that's the water tower, and we did have the opportunity to meet with them on Tuesday, so thank you, Abby, for making some of the concessions that we were concerned about. There was only one thing that I wanted to note, that with the berm, it didn't state the size of the trees, the plantings that we had said was going to be about eight to 10 feet in height and what type of plantings that would be, like greenery's.
Kevin did put that in an email.
I think he just responded directly to Justin.
Okay.
But I didn't see that as stated from Trinity in specifics.
So those, so right now, what we will be doing is having our landscape architects take this drawing and include it, update their landscaping drawings to include those in our package that we will be submitting as part of our site plan approval, final site plan approval and subdivision approval to the town. So those details will be in the landscaping drawings, but they were. But they were in Kevin's, Kevin's email.
Perfect. Yes, that was directed.
But they will be updated in the drawings.
Terrific. And also with the stormwater drainage that runs along the property line, that will also be noted, right, to show?
Yes, yes. If it's not already noted in this drawing, it will be noted in the... This is a very basic sketch, but the fully designed development drawings will be incorporated into our permit set.
And is that what will be submitted to the planning board?
To the planning board, and our goal is by the end of the month.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Abby, I would congratulate, or say thank you again for the fact that Kevin actually committed to very large caliber trees.
Kevin likes to commit to expensive trees. He will be remembering that.
He's not singing. He's not chiming in.
No, he's driving right now, so he, let's, he can keep his eyes on the road.
Thanks, Kevin.
So, I just, Abby, I wanted to thank you for all your efforts there and everything else, and for listening to the neighbors. I had a couple of emails from Justin, and he, again, confirmed that he's in favor of it, as you described it, along with, obviously, with the trees and the berms that need to be defined and everything else. And I know that Matt's...
He just chimed in here.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you again for the work here to all. Really appreciate it. Matt Perle, 44.
So, thank you again. And again, I'm available, should anybody need any questions about, you know, the existing situations or concerns or environmental issues or anything else up there. I'm still available for your, any questions you might have later on. Thank you again. Thank you, team.
No problem. Well, we're, no congratulations yet. Our goal, as always, is to build it. So, let's save those till we build it. But just wanted to make note in my email where I forwarded this, I just noticed a typo that we had moved the parking lot 30 feet to the south, not three feet to the south to accommodate those new spaces. So, that was an error.
And Jean Minio just stepped up to the mic. Go ahead, Jean.
Yep. So, this parking lot came up as a question around the peer review process with the planning board that we're going through with the hearings now. And so, I'm just looking for some clarification. Who's building the parking lot? Will that be Trinity?
Trinity will be building the parking lot.
And then who's managing the parking lot, the town? So then, because our parking lot does not have enough spaces, we're 14 spaces short, the peer review is looking for an agreement that would confirm dedicated parking for those 14 spots in that overflow parking lot.
I think we can do that.
No, it's town, that's going to be public parking so that anyone, whether they're going to a Bellefort event, whether they're going up to walk the dog, whether they're up, but there's, there's been nothing come to us to ask for 14 to be dedicated to Bellefort. No.
The bigger issue, I thought, we've had this discussion, not in the context that you're raising, but I thought six months to a year ago, this issue, the issue came up around controlling who could, you know, who could park there, designate who could park there, because it's public parking. Mark, I thought it was you that brought it up, but I could be wrong. I thought we were not allowed...
I haven't really been involved in...
Because it's a town-owned public lot. I don't think we can pre-designate ownership of any of those spaces. And I thought, I thought it was actually illegal.
I will have to go back. Let me go back and check and have a conversation. Mark is correct. Lisa's been handing out all of our legal on that, so let me, let me go back and review that with Lisa.
Jean, what's the issue that you've been facing, that you need 14 dedicated spaces?
Yes.
For what?
That's what they're asking for, in order to meet code.
Can you seek a waiver on that?
We could, but I think I need something in writing from the select board that says you're not going to dedicate the 14 spaces, that it's a 72-spot public parking lot.
Let's talk to Lisa, and I'll reach...
That's something to be discussed separately.
Yes, that'll be a separate negotiation. Let me, let me talk to Lisa, and then I can reach back out, and we can schedule a meeting.
Okay. And then, Abby, do you have a sense of what the anticipated timeframe might be for construction of that lot?
I don't at this point in time.
Okay. They are suggesting that the parking lot would need to be completed before we could get a certificate of occupancy, but I'm hoping the planning board would give us that waiver, since there's other parking on the property.
Let me talk to Maria and to Lisa, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Jean. All right, on that note, then, I think we're good with Trinity. Let those guys get their night back?
Yeah, I think if everybody's in favor of this concept, they can start working on it. I'm sure Jeff Keteritz is actually probably waiting Abby's email right now to start working on it.
Should we make a motion on this?
My question is, after all the discussions we've had.
I would like a vote.
Bill, you got to jump up here.
I wanted to say, I would assume that your approval here is going to be conditional upon the conceptual ideas making their way into the final plans.
Yes, this is just a, just a vote of approval of the conceptual. The select board will get a chance to see the planning board, see what will be submitted to the planning board before it's submitted to the planning board.
See, I understand. Everybody keeps asking questions. They're just trying to heighten the drama of this one particular vote.
All right, fire away.
I move that we accept Trinity's modified design concept for the water tower parking lot.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Loud and clear. All right, thank you so much, Abby.
Make sure that's captured in the meeting minutes.
It's recorded. Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next up here in our appointments on John Woodhall to request a potential vote for the inclusion of Kingsbury Pond, Meeting House Pond, and Vine Lake in the pond surveys Conservation Commission is undertaking as funded by the warrant article approved a town meeting in 2024. John, you want to?
Refresh their memory.
Patiently been sitting out there.
Okay, well, John Woodhall, I'm the ponds coordinator on the Conservation Commission, okay? And back in 2024, there was a warrant article to do a pond survey on five ponds. And the Conservation Commission has, you know, requested proposals, and we have proposals to do this work. And it's really just that we're asking all the different groups that have some interest in the ponds, are you supportive of having your ponds included in this, in this work?
Simple enough, right?
And it's, we already scoped it all out. There's really nothing for you to do other than to say, yes, it would be okay.
Excellent.
Yes.
So, there's, you're saying there's no downside. I was looking at, saying, "Why wouldn't we do it?"
Well, it's not, no, it's not, we're not bringing this before because of the downside. It's really just because it's polite, I suppose.
Right.
Polite's not something we see a lot out here.
Well, required.
We do, we do. Sounds great to me.
Yeah, you sent us an email probably about a month or so ago. So, yeah, having read that email, it certainly makes sense.
Okay, that's it. All right.
John, as long as you're here, I wanted to thank you, just because I'm aware of how much work you're doing for the Conservation Commission, so thank you.
It's what I do now that I don't work.
So, we will vote on it, since it's a potential vote, right, just to make it official?
Sure, to make it official. I move that we request that the Kingsbury Pond, Meeting House Pond, and Vine Lake Pond, or Vine Lake be included in the pond surveys that the Conservation Commission is undertaking.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, now, discussion items. Moving to fiscal 2025 fiscal policy compliance.
So, you have a number of people here who are ready, who are, would like to talk to you about number six, and hear a discussion about six. Frank and I are here all night, so why don't we move on to a little later?
All right, no worries. We'll jump right to six. Continue discussion of proposal for development of a portion of parcel B at the former Medfield State Hospital. So, I'm going to start this conversation with, all we've done is met with someone who brought an idea to us to start a conversation. We have done nothing. We have, we do know that we have 12 acres that, as a town, it is zoned for us to build something on it. I can't stress enough, and I, and you guys can chime in as I say this, but we're looking at seeing what we can do with a piece of property that we know we, we purchased in incorporation with the state, because whatever happens up there, we split the proceeds with the state. But we've received a lot of emails, and some of the emails come with data points that I think are incorrect. We own this land, so if we were to build something on it, or we had someone come along and buy it from us, that's a revenue stream. We take, bring that money in, and we can put it towards projects like building a new school. People have said, "Well, just go find another piece of property." We don't have town-owned property. So, that's saying, "Town, go take money, $5, $10 million, buy a piece of property, and then, oh, by the way, put another $20 million on top of it." We don't, we don't want to do that. The other thing we don't want to do is 40% of this town is conservation passive. So, the other option would be, what, we go legislate to try to take 20 acres? Don't want to do that. So, we're trying to work with a very limited inventory of land to look at what we can monetize. That being said, we haven't, the one thing I've heard over and over again is, the sledding hill has never been on anyone's proposal. Standing and looking out at the sledding hill today, what goes on up there, that view will stay the same. Now, going over your shoulder and looking towards the softball field, maybe that changes, maybe. But we're just doing the due diligence to get the conversation going, to get people thinking. If we were to put out an RFP, it's not handed, being handed to Onyx, it's going to, we're going to get other ideas in. But as a board, we, now that we know Trinity's in motion and everything's going the right way there, we have this piece of property across the street. It is town-owned land, and I can't stress enough, if you see land being developed around town, that's private citizens selling 15, 20 acres. And it may be generational land that's been in their family for 15, 20, 100 years. That's their land to sell. That's not town-owned land. So, there's a distinct difference, and we can't just step onto the high school field and say, you know, "We're going to, we're going to start building on school land." You don't have that option. So, we have a very limited inventory of what we can act on. And, and looking at acting, we're looking to act to try to bring in dollars to reduce what I see as a very large tax bill starting to build here. And no one wants their tax bill to go up. And any way we can be creative to help to try to impact that, that's all we're doing. So, I have no problem personally with all the emails that have come in and the concerns people have. 100% appreciate that. But I just am trying to get ahead of the people that have come in with comments of, "Well, you can look elsewhere." Well, we don't have a lot of other places to look that we own, and it's all about trying to do this in a cost-efficient way. But Pete, I'm going to let you and Gus say what you want to say, and then I certainly welcome anyone that came here to the meeting tonight to step up to the microphone and ask any questions, express any concerns.
So, I would start by saying that the select board has done something. We've, we've put a process in motion so that we actually have taken steps. And, and to be honest, you sound like an advocate to me. But, so...
For doing something with 12 acres, that's, that's to do something with it.
All right, you're advocating for doing something.
Yeah, that's all I'm trying to say.
And I heard you wanted to make money out of it, so... It's very early. It's, you know, it's a process that the town residents will decide at an annual town meeting. We don't have any proposals at the moment. I regard that land as absolutely precious. It's, I think it's one of the greatest town assets that we have, so that anything that we would do with it certainly has to meet an exceedingly high standard, so, but it's very early days.
There's probably a whole lot of different directions I could go with my comments. I'm going to try to keep them, I'm going to try to keep them concise in light of the emails that have come in. Eileen is right. A lot of the information that the emails are based on is erroneous. It's inaccurate. It assumes things that have happened. Pete, I'm not attacking you. I'm going to make an observation. I think what happened was when you put out information before it had ever come in for the first deliberative discussion of the select board, that caused people to basically vote, communicate against a proposal that hadn't even been put on the table. It was like just a blanket thing, and that's, that stirs up more confusion. So, I'm not, I'm not going after Pete.
I don't think education of residents is harmful to them.
I don't think, my point is, I don't think, as an observation, the blog that you posted, which, as far as I can tell by state standards, is allowed, actually gave good information or promoted a useful discussion as of where we're at right now. That's, and I'm not attacking him, just making the observation. You have to figure that out, just like we do, the rest, Eileen and I do. There's a few things that I took away from the one actual discussion we've had so far. I was thinking that this idea of putting in an athletic facility that could get us a parks and rec facility, as someone who's lived here for 30 years and has never seen the town once vote actual real money for a parks and rec facility, I was thinking that there's a good number of people here in town that would have seen this as a likely way to finally get a parks and rec facility and possibly get a, an agreement with even the commercial side that was being built to provide greater athletic facilities available for, for the town, the townsfolk, but especially for the kids in town that play sports. So, I was half expect, I was more than half expecting a wave of enthusiasm for this thing that would get us a parks and rec facility at no net cost to the town, and also provide an opportunity to develop the 12 acres of developable land in a way that is sort of consistent with what we've done there with McCarthy Park. That's what I expected. That's not what we heard. We got enough blowback on that idea about having anything that I think I'm convinced, and I'm guessing that Pete and Eileen might be as well, that in the same way that before we went for the town approval to, to basically sell off the state hospital campus to Trinity, that we basically, it was a tricky thing. We couldn't sign the contract with Trinity until we had gotten the approval to dispose of the property at town meeting, and it wasn't fair to ask people to approve of disposal, of authorizing the select board to dispose of the property at town meeting if they didn't know what we were planning to do. So, there was this sort of carefully orchestrated sequence that says, "Okay, here's the proposal. Let us have the authority, and then we can sign the contract." I don't think what we're doing here is going to have to be as complex and burdensome, but I think the process that we follow here is going to be one that's going to allow a conversation in town to work through a concept for what we want to do with that property, that then can be turned into an RFP, and the town then gives us approval to dispose of the property for a purpose that the town has embraced, and then we can actually sign a contract. And that's not something that we're going to get all done between now and the beginning of May. So, from a process standpoint, there were some very thoughtful messages that said, "I don't know what I'm voting for. Fair enough. Here's the things to think about." A, that's in, it's in the state hospital master reuse plan. This is what the town, over a five-year strategic planning process, said they wanted us to do with that 12 acres. So, the people who are now coming in and saying, "Oh, that's not what the town wants", you need to make the case that that five-year strategic planning process no longer applies. And maybe everybody in town's changed their mind. Two, we have, it is in fact, developable property, and we are in fact, talking about a proposal that will deliver real money to us. So, that real money, I'm worried about the school. If you don't care about that, you don't care about the land value at all, because I guess some people have so much money, they don't care, okay. But that's the implication here, is trying to get parks and rec a facility it can use without adding a capital expense onto the town to build a parks and rec facility and get money coming in to basically help offset the cost of a school. That's the, and, and by the way, preserve the bulk of that property all the same anyway. Most of what we've got is open space.
Right.
That's, that's the thing we're trying to figure out how to balance.
And so, this has been a long meeting, and I don't want to make it that much longer. So, I'm not going to continue on, but I'm going to welcome anybody here to step up to the microphone if they have anything they'd like to say. But if you don't say it from your chair, please go to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Gil Rogers, Medfield resident, member of the hunt club, and I was also very much involved in the development of the master plan. So, I have all that detailed in history. And I'd just make a few kind of key points, because I know we don't have too much time. First of all, representing the Norfolk Hunt Club, we use that field, the sledding field, the trails around it, all the time. We have six or eight applications right now into the board for approval. It's on your agenda if we get that, that late. We would want to continue that in perpetuity. That's gone on for over 120 years. It means a lot to the town, to the value of the town. We wouldn't want to see that disturbed. The second point is that the legacy of the hunt club is... The second point is that the legacy of the Hunt Club is it must continue hunting and the presence of, of the hunt and the different exercises we have, such as hunter paces and other exercises. The third point I'd like to make is that the Bay Circuit Trail is very important, not just to Medfield, but to the whole Boston area. If you have walked, I know some of you have actually walked it. The Bay Circuit Trail goes right through that field. It connects that field to the Kingsbury Club and then on to the steeplechase course. So it's a very important connector. So we wouldn't want to see that disrupted or interfered with. The last, the last point is that I'd like to make is that in riding horseback, one of the things that's very important is what you see. You know, you see the open fields, you see the mountains in the distance, you see trees, you see the Charles River. If you're interrupting that, if you're taking and disrupting the landscape, the scene of the sky, all that, that hurts, that has an impact on the horse, on the horses, on the riders. And from the perspective of Medfield State Hospital, it has an impact on the value of the, of the hospital grounds itself. Could impact, for example, on historic tax credits. So we think that what's important is not to disrupt that, not to put buildings in or large parking spaces or disrupt the views or to have any impact in disrupting, in the hunts and the use of it for the community. Thank you.
Hi. Testing.
No, that, you're not gonna, it's not gonna do anything for you, only at home. Mike and at home.
So I'm Michael Taylor. I chair the Medfield District, District Commission. I wanted to make a couple of points. So whatever happens up at the Medfield State Hospital Parcel B does have to go through the, the, the district, District Commission. And we do look at things like scalability of the building. So I guess the Onyx proposal isn't anything you're really considering. But if you were considering a proposal like that, and we had, you had those huge buildings there, they're so out of scale with the other historical properties, we would have a really difficult time, in my opinion, approving them. And we do, we do, we do have the ability to reduce the square footage to make it more applicable. So I think what you have there is a totally unworkable plan, from my personal perspective.
You're saying this building is gonna be bigger than the Odyssey House was?
Yeah, it looks, yeah.
No, bigger, like bigger, when you say.
No, I'm talking about the square footage, I'm talking about footprint.
Okay, not, not height. I assume you're talking about height.
Right. So, so when you, when you have, when you have new construction, you're looking at the, the footprint of the building, you're looking at how big it is, and then you're looking at what are the other historic buildings around it? So if this thing is five times larger in terms of footprint than anything there, it doesn't really quite work. The, the other point is, and I realize the Onyx proposal isn't what you're considering, but the buildings that, that I saw, at least on, on paper, were so close to the road, right? And you say, well, it wouldn't have impacted the sledding hill. Yeah, it would have. I mean, the sledding hill consists of cars driving up there, there's this beautiful, you know, flat area, and then you go down the hill.
It, well, actually it won't. If you watch what he did in his biggest, he literally pulled the parking lot away from it and was gonna dedicate some of it, because today people just park near the logs. So he wasn't looking to go down, the whole concept was to leave what you see today, where those logs are, looking forward and put parking spaces in the parking lot. If they were, again, this is so like 30,000 feet, light number two pencil, like, he brought an idea, it got people thinking.
I would need a minute to find it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a plan that they put together lightly.
I understand, it's a hypothetical.
Well, no, and that's all we had to work with, right? But we knew, and we knew the three of us, that it was just, so let's listen to an idea, because we know we have this landfill.
So, Eileen, where are the 14 acres? I mean, have we delineated, or 12? Have we delineated where they're, they are?
We can, we can, we can move them around.
Okay. So it's, it's a really long process we're going through. I just wanted to make sure that, that you're aware that, and I'm sure you are, that the Medfield District, District Commission would have review of.
But I'd like to understand what you're saying here, Michael. So in, not that, not that the Onyx proposal is a proposal, but it's a concept. And whatever we would do would probably be in that direction if we go down that path. The building Onyx proposed was 50,000 square feet, and then has separate building for Parks and Rec is 20,000. Are you saying that that's too much? And if we cut it in half, let's say, because I think Anton said, well, you could get by with half as many courts, that would also undoubtedly mean that that would be a 10,000 square foot Parks and Rec building.
Well, something like that would be much more in scale.
Yeah, that's the 20,000, that's the 20,000. So you took out everything that's commercial and said, well, he can build us a free $20,000 square foot facility. I don't think that's gonna go anywhere.
Well, but the point, like, the, the, the commission can impose dimensional and setback requirements.
Oh, yeah, I want to understand your intent here, because the effect of the intent I'm hearing is that, no, the Historic Commission can actually prevent the Parks and Rec facility from being built there.
But in terms of, we'd have to understand what's really 50,000 square feet. We'd have to understand what's really 20,000 square feet. We'd have to understand where, where is it going? We'd have to understand further, how big are the, the buildings around it? I mean, how, is it a scalable issue? But so that all would have.
As we're looking at a process, it sounds like we should make sure that the Historic Commission's one of the participants in that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I agree, yeah.
Christian?
This one? Either one?
Either one, I think, right? Either one.
Thank you. Christian Donner, 92 Green Street. I'm here as a resident of Medfield. And I would like to question the assertion that you've made that this is a buildable lot and that you can move the 12 acres around at will. And, and I'll explain why. The, when you go to Mass TIS, you see that the entire 40 acres have a agricultural, what's it called?
Restriction.
Restriction, conservation restriction. Preservation restriction, I think is the correct term, from 1993. So I think that's, yeah, I don't know if that is, if that exists, that these maps are often inaccurate.
They're inaccurate.
It doesn't really matter. What my question, my concern is that the state seemed to have a large interest in preserving this property, this parcel B in its entirety. If you are, if you read through the language of the, the state law from 2008, Chapter 269, I think, Section 8, it is clearly stated that the commissioner, the Decam Commissioner was required to designate agricultural preservation restriction for this land before it gets conveyed to the town of Medfield. Now, they didn't do that. Instead, they wrote that into the land disposition agreement with Medfield, transferred that obligation to you, and you didn't do it. So my argument is that the state has a recourse here because Medfield, Medfield didn't fulfill their terms of the land disposition agreement, right? So there was supposed to be a swap with the homeless land of some portion of that, that would have made the 12 acres buildable, didn't happen. So that was my first concern.
When you say didn't happen, what, what part didn't happen?
The agricultural preservation restriction was not put in place within two years as required by the land disposition agreement. And my, my second concern is, is Article 97. And I think that even though it has been avoided, that our, an Article 97, which is like open space designated land that the state enforces, that counts for special rules for disposing of. But there is case law that, and I'm no attorney here, but there, there is apparently, there are examples of courts deciding that Article 97 can be implied, even though if it's not explicitly designated. And it can be implied by several reasons, and I think two of which are met here. And one is longstanding use as open space of a property is one reason why it could be implied. And the other one is official statements made by the town that, that suggested open space conservation, preservation of that land. And I'd like to remind you of the flyer that was sent to Medfield households in 2014 that has language to that effect. And specifically, it says here on page three, "The sledding hill property parcel B, two bullet points. Number one, keep the sledding hill as it is and maintain open vistas on this portion of the purchased land." And you said what sledding, sledding hill is not affected. But look at that, the sledding hill is affected. I know.
No, he literally just proves that.
But you know how these things come around? And then, second bullet point, "Cite the construction of a town recreation building near the current site of the Odyssey Home, one town recreation building, consistent with the limitation, again, that only one building may be built on this parcel of prime cultural, cultural land." So I'm just arguing that there might be some stumbling blocks for the town if we pursue this that could expose us to litigation and cost. And as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about that in addition to losing the crown jewel of, of open space in Medfield.
Do you have a proposal for a Parks and Rec facility?
No. But, yeah, no, I don't.
And you don't want us to go and legislate to take open space that's already been designated open space and open that up for construction?
Can you say that again?
You don't want us to then go to legislature and request space that's already designated as open space in this town? And make that buildable, right? Because right now, at least we have something that we think we can build on.
I'm saying this could be difficult, more difficult than you think it is. You, you need to do your.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm George Lester, 28 Hartford Street, Medfield resident since 1994. I served 25 years on the Planning Board. I served on the Open Space and Recreation Master Plan Committee. And I'm a senior citizen and a retiree. I'm here as, today as the president, in my role as president of the Friends of Medfield Forests and Trails, which is a 501(c)(3) organization established in 1995 with the mission to work, work for the protection and maintenance of forest trails, open space, and other natural features in the town of Medfield, which contribute to the town's recreation resources, scenic beauty, special wildlife habitats, distinctive character, and historic significance. And as part of this role, we are the stewards of the Bay Circuit Trail as it passes through Medfield. We work with the Appalachian Mountain Club, but we are the local Bay Circuit Trail entity. I'm here to state, our organization is opposed to the proposed warrant article, which we haven't seen yet, but from what we understand is to do is to dispose of this land for a private commercial development. We endorse the Upper Charles Land Trust and Medfield Historic District Commission letters that have actually been submitted from those folks. And we will submit a written statement to it, but just weren't able to prepare it before, before this meeting. So I just have a few quick points. One is just also to be, to be clear about what the town is proposing in terms of just nomenclature. Because there seemed to be conflating at the February 25th meeting of the for-profit commercial development nature of what Mr. Meltiando wants to do and the nonprofit purpose of, of basketball, which every, no one, no one is against youth basketball. But, and, and he was quite open about it. I think the confusion was with others, that this is, he is a for-profit commercial development entity seeking to, for the town to sell him the land for a for-profit development, and his tenant would be the basketball organization.
Which is also his program. He has two things.
Well, that's another whole issue. He's, right, that's another, that's another whole issue. He's a private, he's a developer, he's also on the board of this basketball entity. Now, I'm, I'm on a lot of nonprofit boards now, and I have to sign a conflict of interest policy acknowledgement for every nonprofit board I'm on. So that's not your guy's issue, but it does call into some question the viability, that if there's a risk involved in what he's, he's proposing to do, because he's essentially self-dealing between a, his commercial development entity and the board that he sits on. And, and I, and I don't mean, I don't, and I'm not saying, I, I have no personal knowledge of that, but I just know that, that that's sort of raised as a possibility of an issue. But that's not the, the point. The, the main thing is, you know, this is, as everyone has said clearly, it's a crown jewel of the town's open space. I don't need to dwell on all the things. But, but if you look at that, the, the high school cross-country course obliterated from that proposal. The Bay Circuit Trail, maybe about half obliterated, having to be relocated around the bottom. The, the field, you know, yeah, the slope is still there, but basically you're sledding off the edge of the parking lot.
Remember, literally he said, we just put this up here for conversational purposes. This, this could look 1,000% different. But so like, so I get everyone's concern, but like, he, he must have said 18 times that night, we just threw things up there, don't, the fields are an idea, the fields could go away. Where the belt, building is to the right, he thought he wanted to give Parks and Rec a separate building. He could put it together. There's nothing in, and again, it's just, it was a great way to start a conversation.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, where it's sitting on the top of the hill there, I mean, move it 50 feet this way, 50 feet that way, it's still a huge facility at the top of the hill that blocks out the whole view shed that, that we've been talking about. And actually, the Upper Charles letter had a really interesting point. When you're driving north on 27, you look up and you see, you can see all the way to the hospital buildings. And I, I haven't like drawn the angle, but instead you're gonna see this building.
And so, George, you would advocate that the town should pay for its own Parks and Rec facility?
I advocate that the town should.
Or not have one.
Should not proceed with the article, that it's not.
Effectively, this is.
Well, you know, you're arguing, I mean, show some leadership, figure it out. I mean, there's, there are other parcels in town.
That's the part that people write in emails. And you know the open space in town, right? You did a phenomenal report. We don't have that, town-owned, open space, that kind of commodity.
Well, there is the land at the end of Ice House Road. I understand the Kingsbury Club has some contract. Have you approached them to make a deal?
Well, it's not adequate land, it's not big enough.
It's not big enough. It's, it abuts a ton of conservation and wetlands. So I, back in the day when I was Chair of Parks and Rec, we looked at that piece of property before it even got to where it is today with Kingsbury. And I think you have maybe three acres that's work.
Well, that, that's fair. I mean, moving back, I'm not saying, to be fair, we don't contend that you, the town can't build anything there, but we're asking the town to honor that 2014 commitment, that it's one municipal building, and it's cited more appropriately than that, than that proposal.
So how would you fund the municipal building?
I'm not the board of Select, I mean, that's.
So you don't know?
I don't know.
Do you know any way other than for taxes?
We're an open space protection.
Okay, so, all right, fair enough. So you're, that's the issue you have, okay.
Maybe you can, maybe you can, maybe you can build the building and, and, and then, and rent leased directly to the same youth basketball organization, get the rental income.
And I, listen, you've done great work in town. You know how much open space we have, right? And there's so, and that's why I think people in town, whether they've been here a year or been here 25 years, they have no idea some of the space they look out at. The town does own, but it's deeded conservation, can never be built on. What's frustrating right now, over the last year and a half or so, is some of these large pieces of property that have been sold off, that are private, like the, on, on Plain Street. You know, that, the project that's up right now for 40B, that's a private residence selling. That's not town-owned land. Like, don't we wish we had more town-owned land? We don't. And all we're trying to do is, was as we sit here and try to solve this very large tax bill that's coming at us, is how do we try to soften the blow? And we don't have the answer sitting here right now. But by exploring ideas and getting more brainstorming, that's all we're trying to do. And in doing that, we're hearing from organizations that are, are, want us to think about as we make these steps forward, don't impact the, the Hunt Club, don't impact the, the forestry group. We, I mean, I'll speak for myself, I'm hearing it loud and clear, but at the same time, we're gonna have to decide, how do we, Parks and Rec deserves a building. They absolutely, they've been kicked around, I mean, it was by one vote back in 2008, and would be actually doing something up there if we got that vote, because that was the whole intent. Everything that we did for that, that building was intended to be at McCarthy Park.
Yeah. Well, and that can be perfectly fair. Again, I, we acknowledge the town reserved the 12-acre right to build. The town also made a representation, it would be one municipal building, such as Park and Rec. And I think it could be appropriately cited in that area somewhere. But, but, you know, but, but let's go through that process to have, have a more concrete proposal. I mean, that gets to my last concern, is just the process concerns. For one, I mean, you even acknowledged that you don't know what the 12 acres are yet. So that would mean that basically the town would be voting to convey the whole, since there's not gonna be any, there's no subdivided parcel.
We were designated. We have not designated the 12 acres. We don't know what it would be. For a lot of the issues, you're. For a lot of the issues you're bringing up are valid issues that we don't, we have no intention of screwing up the Norfolk Hunt Club. We don't want to screw up the high school cross-country course. We have a lot of land to work with there and so.
Well, maybe after a proper engineering analysis, we can figure it out better.
I think we probably need more even just, just hearing from the town what they really want. We can get to one, my question for Anton was, why do you have two buildings? Why, wouldn't it be more efficient to put the both together? He said, yeah, we could do that too. So we could get, the issue about one municipal building, the issue is Parks and Rec facility, how can you get there if you're saying, well, it's going to be a municipal building that's paid for by taxes? Then I've been here 30 years and we haven't paid a dime for that yet. If this is a mechanism to get to a Parks and Rec facility and it's funded without hitting taxpayers, we're just saying, we should be looking at that.
Yeah. Well, I know that in the entire time I've been living in Medfield, there's been multiple proposals. It always seemed like Park and Rec got kicked.
Not kind of, they absolutely have.
Got kicked to the bottom of the list, you know, we, since I've lived here, we've had, you know, town hall, library.
Public safety building.
Three new schools, public safety, town garage, and poor Park and Rec was always like bounced to the end of the list.
Exactly.
So for one, as a taxpayer, I'm willing to support a Park and Rec building in my taxes if that helps preserve it on a smaller footprint.
Except before or after the school project gets passed, George.
Honestly, George, that's all we're trying to do is, we know the costs that are coming. We know ways in which we're trying to soften the blow. We're not going to have all the answers, but we're going to throw some ideas out. And we're going to get feedback like this, which is totally fine.
The last point I want to make is just with all due respect, I think what got a big reaction going is, was the manner in which this proposal only was presented to the public on February 25th, just a little over two months before town meeting. And that, and that the, but the way the news was reported was that the developer had been having private meetings with each of you. Well, that's what they reported.
Okay, this is where bad information, he reached out to Christine and said, we'd like to talk about the property. I went, I, actually, I think I met with him February 28th last year, one-on-one, to learn more about what is this gentleman talking about, right? It's always, like, that's the rule on the select board. Somebody wants to come and buy something in the town, come and talk to one of the select board members. I was the first one to do it. I don't think these two talked to him for eight months later.
It was in the summer and I, and I went into it saying, okay, we're going to have this trade-off between letting just, selling a piece of property to get funds for the school or not doing it because we want a Parks and Rec facility and they'll, you know, we'll give them the land and they'll build us a Parks and Rec facility. And to my surprise, he said, no, we pay commercial for the land and we'll get the Parks and Rec facility. I said, so I don't have to, I can have my cake and eat it too. Let's bring this guy in, talk to him.
So then Pete finally met with him because the three of us can't talk about this until we sit here.
Right.
And three of us, it was pointless to talk about it until we all spoke with this gentleman. So we finally, Pete was the last one to meet with him, and then we finally had a chance to have him come in and present to all three of us. So we weren't playing post office. And, you know, that's where, again, no disrespect to the blog, but the blog, that was Pete's version of his meeting. That wasn't my version of the meeting and it wasn't Gus's version. So to finally get the gentleman up there to draw the interest that we have right now, nothing wrong with that.
It just would have created more of an open impression of transparency and openness if, because I know this is how we did it on the planning board. Developer had an idea and he wasn't ready to actually file plans, but come and make an appointment, come to the board, have an appointment.
But you can't do that without being a select board meeting. There's no appointment without the candidate on us. It's not executive session because all we're doing is listening to an idea of the town.
Always public too.
The town, the town should be able to hear it. We did it at a select board meeting. It was a discussion, the first time that that gentleman finally spoke to the three of us at the same time. And he must have said multiple times, like, this is just a concept and he respects, it's not his project. He's this one person coming forward. Now it's stirring a conversation to say, what do we do? We know we, the three of us own a final site. We have to put it up to the town to give the town people's voices, say, yes, we're going to grant you the ability or not. We, I think it's safe to say, to do something this May, I'm going to speak out of turn here, but I think it's too early to, it's too early to have it on the warrant. I think you're going to hear that later in this meeting, that we're going to take another year. We're going to, hopefully, other people in and around this area are like, hey, the select board's listening for ideas, keep bringing them in. The one thing, George, I will say, I took this role. I'm up for reelection again in a month. I am extremely transparent. I respect, I don't call him, I don't even have his number. I do not talk to Pete. We don't break open meeting rules. The only time we talk is here. Sometimes it gets contentious because we can't have the one-offs because we're not a party of five. I can't call Pete, have our disagreement, our viewpoints, right? Two is a quorum. So then when he finally hears stuff from him, sometimes it catches him off guard. Sometimes Gus and I, I don't know what he's about to say and I'm like, okay, like even tonight with the interviews, I couldn't call and say, what questions are you going to ask? What questions are you going to ask? So as the last person, I'm trying to write, take notes. Okay, what was asked? Okay, here we go. So please know, we are not trying to do anything behind anyone's back.
I trust you and I'll totally accept that. But maybe Mr. Meltjander was a little bit throwing you under the bus because he repeated a few times, I've been working on this with the town for a year.
Well, he has. He's been talking to Christine off one, two, three times. He's talked with me. If he's talked to the select board members and Christine, that's talking to the town.
Yeah.
Right? So he said it and it created the sense of, look what's going on behind the scenes. So tonight, we are cleaning that slate.
Okay, thank you very much.
If what it's worth, George, I was skeptic to start. Somebody comes in and says, hey, I want an appointment to present a business proposition to you guys. I'm not in favor of putting them on the agenda. I want to know who he is. I started off skeptical as all get out about this. Yeah, you want to come in?
Well, in fairness, it's appropriate to come and say, talk to Christine or the planning director. That's like with on the planning board, a lot of times the developer will go in and talk to the planning director just to get information, bounce ideas and say, hey, do you think the board will like this? That, my understanding is that's okay, but it's the, these sort of one-off meetings with the actual decision makers that create a, you know, a funky impression.
Depends how it gets presented, which goes back to the blog.
So we are running super late and we still have an executive session for two more items. So Mel, I know you haven't had a chance to speak.
Quickly, Christine. Mel Siebel, Parks and Rec Commission. Just to say, the commission is in favor. We're well aware, this is in infant stages. We welcome discussion. We've already welcomed the discussion with Onyx. And very briefly, two for less than a half an hour. And anything that would satisfy Parks and Recreation, satisfying their biggest and greatest need for the last 30 years, especially in light of the FAB Center closing permanently now. I mean, we put almost 800 children through our summer camps last year. Now we're scurrying to hire modular units to handle them for the upcoming summer camps. So we're aware it's initial stages and it seems extremely feasible for Parks and Rec that this proposal, we were shocked, quite frankly, that a private entity would consider bringing a municipal building right on site. So.
Thank you. All right. You haven't had a chance to speak, so.
A resident of Medfield for 81 years, so please let me speak and I am.
Is this your first time to select?
My husband has been on a different board.
Just for those at home, do you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, Chris Hasier, Spring Street. So I have been working to save open space way, way back with Mike Sullivan, right, Chris?
We're on the open space committee in 1999.
Open space. We have been really fighting to get as much open space and keep it. This is such a busy area. You talk about the youth, you talk about senior citizens. We all use this property. I have been using this property my whole life. I've been riding horseback, hiking, walking dogs, the sledding hill. The sledding hill is probably the most safe sledding hill in Massachusetts, one of them. It's, it's just, I mean, you can go up there and there are hundreds of children using it. So it is for the children. It's for senior citizens. It's for the teenagers who, it's for the gentlemen who play softball. It's really not a place to put a building like that. It needs to be open space. I am, I am very sad that the town is even thinking about selling that space. If anything, the most you should do is maybe lease something. And that ugly building should go, if it ever goes there, why can't it go way to the right where you now enter those soccer fields? That's the ugliest entrance. It needs to be repaired. It's a big hole. It's, it's just not the place for a building. There's a whole horseshoe of open space that goes around the campus. And it would be, it really saddens me to think that you are giving up any open space.
When you look at what's there, you've got to just, in your mind, go, somebody wants to build something. But it could be, to your point, Chris, could it be pulled further down? There's, we have not defined exactly where it's, we just had to start the conversation. This is what he threw up on the slide. He could have done something dramatically different, but this is what he put up just to get the conversation going that night.
You know, I go back, I was one of the first people called to help create the Bay Circuit Trail. They knew that I knew the trails and, Chris, could you tell us where to go? And I did, you know, come into these beautiful fields, these beautiful trails that are already there. I agree with Mr. Peterson. Please don't disturb them. They're, they're just, they're a treasure and they're something that we should save for generations, for our grandchildren's children to come and use this property.
So just to be clear again, the argument you're making is one that practically says, don't worry about a Parks and Rec facility.
No, that isn't what I'm saying. I have a couple of ideas of where he could put his building.
Okay.
And I would be.
Or whatever you can. I genuinely be interested.
Well, somebody mentioned the Home Quest property. I was also involved originally when the grant was written to buy that Home Quest property. So I would hate.
Backside of Wheelock?
Yeah, I would hate to see.
So that's the part that we preserved in order to get 12 acres here.
Yeah, because that's.
It's not, it's not, Home Quest is protected permanently.
Conservation would be, there's a water, there's a stream that goes through that all, like, that's, that's, that, there's never, everything is going to be built on that land.
But you see, you see, I consider this open space property, maybe we should have turned it into conservation property and never be able to sell it. I just don't think we should sell it.
Well, but that's not the issue. The issue is the Parks and Rec.
How about if you sold the property down on Plain Street where we have vegetable gardens?
Okay, so that's what we're going to be talking about later on. And that's, that's a very narrow road.
It's protected property.
The community garden is part of the Home Quest property.
We have thought through these things and it's like, we don't have that much space.
Well, I've been thinking too.
Yeah. No, 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 I'm not saying you didn't. Don't take it, but, but when, you didn't send us an email. We've received many emails that say, well, you can, you can just build in other spaces. We would have to buy other spaces, which we're trying to spend less money, not more money. And the one thing I have found is that people, I know not everyone likes change, but when the town has worked over the years, especially in negotiating buying this property and part of the negotiation is, how can we use it going forward? And again, when I was chair of the Park and Rec at 2007, 2008, the whole talk then, and we didn't even own it, was this is where Parks and Rec headquarters is going to be. And that's all we're trying to strive for here. In the same time, if we build something there, can somebody help us fund it? Because that is going to help the average taxpayer's bill. If I get 1,000 emails tomorrow from residents to say, Eileen, you are barking up the wrong tree. If my bill goes up $2,000 next year, not a problem, then shame on me because I'm trying to save people. I don't want $100, let alone 2,000, let alone 3,000. But if we continue to have to eat these bills, that's the only way to cover it, is through taxes, and I don't want to do that.
You know, there are people out there, the Goldwaits, they donated land to trustees and trustees are taking really good care of that land. Is there somebody out there? Are you looking, reach out to the community? Is there anybody out there that, I mean, you haven't, you need to make a big plan.
Frank, how hard did we look when Parks and Rec went down to see what's available in this town to rent, to buy, to do something? It's a very limited inventory.
Put it out to the people.
Well, what's good is people will watch the show, which, the show, this, this meeting, and whether they watch it on YouTube, whether they watch it on Medfield cable. Yeah, so the conversation's going to get out there. But this is not something we're taking lightly at all. Especially the Bay Circuit Trail, I mean, we, we're very aware of what's there. We're also very aware of what the needs are from this town and especially with Parks and Rec constantly being pushed to the back of the line. And this is finally something that's come forward that gets us thinking.
Nobody wants to put the kids in the back of the line. Basketball, we love basketball. We're champions.
I know we are.
So.
Parks and Rec facility, this town has put Parks and Rec at the back of the line for 30 years in the time I've been there.
I know.
So if you don't mind right now, I, I'm looking at the clock and it's 9:20. We still have more items and an executive session.
Oh.
So, no.
Thanks for the comment.
Christian.
I forgot to make that point before. It's really quick. So Christian on our 92 Greens Street, I just wanted to say, if this goes through town meeting, please have a financial plan that goes with it, that shows that all the things that you expect that to bring in actually, you know, how they materialize, I don't see it.
Okay. That's fair enough. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Christian.
All right. And no questions from the spectators online, thank goodness. All right.
Afraid to ask anyone.
Are we going back to five, Chris? Chris, are we skipping over that right now?
Where are we?
Five is 20 fiscal, 2025 fiscal policy.
Be ready to, yeah.
Okay, so this sheet was waiting for you at your seat when you got here tonight. So we do this every year. We not only look back at the current fiscal year, but look ahead to the proposed budget that we're developing for next fiscal year. And then we vote, or we ask you to vote to certify that the current year's budget actuals are aligned with the town's financial policies. It looks a little bit different this year. As you recall, in January, you voted to update the town's financial policies after working with the warrant committee on that. So this is why it's, there's some new metrics in here. It's presented a little bit differently. The three things that I'll draw your attention to are first, one, two, third metric down, the town shall strive to maintain free cash at 3% of the general fund operating expenditure budgets net of debt service. So in the fiscal 25 column, you'll see that we are technically out of compliance on that metric. However, that's because the warmer policy that was in effect during the fiscal 25 budget development process had us at 2.5%. So at the time, we were in compliance. We are technically in compliance. New policy, but we sort of changed the goalposts on ourselves. But the 26 budget as currently proposed is in line with that. The second item is one, two, three items below that one. The balance of the Special Education Reserve Fund cannot exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district. This is actually a state statute that we need to comply with. If you recall, we set up this fund last year at town meeting. This item is in italics because the net school spending figure has not been updated for fiscal year 2026. So we're not able to accurately predict that one. But once it is finalized, we should be able to finalize that metric. And then the third one to call your attention to is the last one. Build a balance to pervert future tax relief to be utilized during the first three fiscal years after the debt issuance, excuse me, debt issuance for the school project. So if you were to go downstairs or look in our annual report, this balance of $1,386,489 would not technically be in the fund. However, incorporated into that total is the remaining proceeds from.
Hinkley South. Hinkley South.
Did that policy actually get built into our financial policy? Because if it did, I missed it about the idea that this is going to be paid out over the first three years of the.
I believe it is in the fiscal policy.
Because I actually disagreed with Steve about that when I met with him because.
You had a disagreement between three or five years, correct?
No, I had a disagreement of basically artificially lowering the first three years of debt. If we were to do a 30-year amortized loan, simply artificially lowering what that impact is for three years and then having it go up for the next 27 years is, to me, just a sleight of hand. You're just trying to get a school, a school project. And I specifically disagreed with it on that basis. I said, if you're going to do that, whatever that is, spread it out over the course of the whole, you know, borrow less and then just set it at whatever the, you know, let the principal drop it by $5 million, if that's how we're going to do it. If we're doing the normal thing that we do, which is straight-line payoff, then I can understand something that clips off and then drops. then I can understand something that clips off and then drops. But I wouldn't want to see something that drops and then jumps. Because that that's just kind of a, that's a bait and switch.
I believe Steve is planning on a straight line payoff.
Yeah, I I actually think it makes sense.
Yeah.
There's two reasons I think that makes sense. Number one, right now, we're staying within Prop two and a half limits. But the reason we've done it for so many years is because our our debt principal's been going down. So it's not really that we stayed on an operating basis within Prop two and a half. It's a financial basis that we've stayed within Prop two and a half. And then all of a sudden, when the school debt comes on, we'll have a big jump in taxes and suddenly the ratchet will jump up to that as Prop two and a half. If we have it as a as a amortized, then what happens is, once it jumps there, it stays that way out through the full 30 years. So you don't get that windfall of paying off principal that then goes into operating budget. I only just figured that out like about a month ago.
Well, these are debt exclusion projects, so they would not impact the operating budget. They're going to fall off.
They don't go into the total.
No, they're debt exclusion.
Okay, I take that back, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yeah, but I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
So I figured out the wrong way. You're right, I have to go back. But even so, an amortized debt in a 50-year building says people 30 years from now are helping to pay off that as opposed to putting the full burden on people today.
That has been the discussion, that has been the discussion the warrant committee has been having.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But you see what I'm saying? If it is amortized, then making it artificially low for a couple of years doesn't make any sense.
Have you talked to any of them, any other ones of these as well? But.
That was, that it's not the the idea that I I was in favor of fund the the account, just not the employment of the accountant that way.
Right.
We can follow up with Steve about that.
So is the plan for us to vote on this this evening?
If you could vote on the fiscal twenty-five budget being in compliance with the financial policies.
Fiscal twenty-six?
Fiscal.
Fiscal year twenty-five. So this is, you're required under the financial policy when we get our numbers and our certified cat free cash for fiscal year twenty-five, when everything is accounted for at the end of the year. We are, we need to show that we were, we had a proposal at last year's town meeting that said we predicted we would be in compliance. And now we're showing you actuals for fiscal year twenty-five to say we are in compliance.
So my issue is, should the policy, if we're if we're saying we're in compliance, then shouldn't we be showing the year ago a policy as opposed to the new policy? In other words, that one that you just pointed out, we can't say we're in compliance. This thing says we're not.
So we've had that discussion with the chairs of the warrant committee, and they thought it would be best to move forward showing fiscal year twenty-five with this policy, with the asterisk that our free cash number was set at two and a half for fiscal year twenty-five, and then it's 3% for fiscal year twenty-six.
That's fine. Where's that asterisk?
At the bottom. It says as part of this financial policy updates, they were approved. They, they and we were confused, were concerned there would be confusion if we showed two different policy metrics in the warrant report. And so we had a discussion about moving forward with one.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Then the only thing we should do, though, is then put the asterisk up.
We can put it higher up.
Just just add it up to the the actual policy, so it's clear what we're doing there.
We can move that. And we'll show that in the in the warrant report.
And then the policy, the very last thing, the policy, it says four to five million, and we're saying, like, the policy, that's the target.
That's the target.
Target.
What I'm getting at is if we say we're validating, we're complying with the policy, we ought to have what's showing. The asterisk is fine.
Yeah.
The four to five million is is either, there should be something in there that explains, this thing says, well, if we said we comply, we're not. Says the policy is four to five million, we get 1.4.
Yeah.
So it's it's a, it's the display of the information, not the issue of being willing to.
This is the conversation we have with Steve. Will.
Stephen, I think, likes.
You do. Well, on this one, you might not. You're actually, you're actually completely opposite on this one.
So this, this includes sale of land proceeds? What land?
Hinkley South.
Okay.
Yeah. Why don't we do this? We have a meeting with Steve and Bob on Tuesday morning, Monday morning. Why don't we talk to them about your concerns tonight? We'll bring it back on the April first meeting.
It could be four to five million by FY twenty-eight or something like that, and that would be fine. Then we'd just say, yeah, we're on track.
I think the policy actually says four to five million by the time we borrow the money.
But that's why I said FY twenty-eight.
Yeah, well, yes, that's okay, yeah. Well.
As long as it says it to where people would understand why we voted to say we're compliant, that's all I'm reacting to.
No, let's talk to them on Monday and we'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, April first.
Let's go.
We will be new chair.
Right.
I'm bringing Steve, I'm bringing Steve to that meeting.
That's not a foregone conclusion.
All right, and. I now jumped down to request from ZBA for comments on the select board on the 40B application for eighty-six Plain Street. This is the Alpeca Farm.
Yeah, so that was the email that Maria sent to everyone. And all of the town departments have the opportunity to comment, so I wanted to give the select board an opportunity to comment. I did leave you a copy of your letter from October of 2024, and your comments were directly related to items that the Conservation Commission, the Affordable Housing Trust, DPW, had recommended. So I'm happy to resubmit those concerns, echo the concerns that our other departments are having. It's up to you.
For me, it's safety issues around the access. I think the access onto Plain Street is too close to another street. There was some other issue with it. But I don't remember now.
It was a wetlands issue.
Well, there's a ton of wetlands, but you know, that's a, they'll have to comply.
Yeah, and they're going with to the Concombre. I mean, I hadn't, I had an issue that day we were in the field regarding the affordable housing compliance moving forward. That's always been an issue, and I want to make sure that they maintain an agency to maintain that compliance.
I don't think I had anything new. I I I understood why the town departments had the issues they had. I haven't had anybody communicate with me. My issue is that unfortunately, we're going to so overshoot 40B because of the 40B law that I wish there was a way not to have that happen. But I don't have anything new to add than what was already in there.
Yeah, nor do I. I mean. We just resubmit, we have, they can see that the concerns that were expressed.
I'm happy to submit that on your behalf.
Okay. Come back to, um, all right, Town Administrator FY twenty twenty-four Performance Review in Merrick. Talk about bringing something up so late. In terms of, we we tried this back in, what, September, and we got derailed and then.
I think we actually, I think we actually started in June.
Well, no, you actually, June 25th, which is one of the meetings we did review. I I can attest to that. And then I was looking through all the meeting notes to see, like, we tried this three times and it got sideways. So tonight, we finally get a chance to review the goals that were assigned to you from July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. So I did get feedback from both Gus and from Pete. And I tallied up a perfect score would have been 100. I can read off each score you guys gave, right? Just the total.
Overall, sure.
So out of, out of 100, Pete gave you 97. Out of 100, Gus scored you an 85. Out of 100, I scored you 89. Giving total points of 271. And then averaging that out was a score of 90. And I don't know what to what detail you want to get into in terms of, I think one of the goals, at least I will say on mine, is I, originally it scored you as two as almost complete until I reread your summary and you actually had it on hold. And I was like, oh, all right, it should be on hold. If it's on hold, I can go to Mayan. That was investigating and implement sustainable landscaping alternatives at the town hall. You actually, as I went back and read, you actually put it on hold. So I don't know how much detail, if you guys want to go through scoring each one or just look at the 90. I mean, I look at.
The only, the only part I'll make on mine, and this happened last year, is that when you get to, it's not unusual, if if you're setting goals, it's not unusual for people not to achieve 100% of every goal. If they do, chances are you're not setting hard enough goals. But as last year, what happened is when I got to a number that was less than 100, I said, yeah, but in the grand scheme of things, there's things that Christine was doing that were not, you know, forecast, that she used good judgment to do that thing instead of this thing. So as I did this year, I came in and I said, I think the full bonus should be awarded.
And I can tell you, based on that statement and looking at, I went last, that that calendar year of July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, I think if I use the word MBTA community, might. Yeah, that took a little bit of time. And then just understanding how many things we've had to deal with with Trinity. Because they're now, they've pushed out 18 months, right? And there's been a lot going on that's gotten to that point. So I I will speak for myself here. I have absolutely no problem paying the full merit because the number of 90 is extremely respectable and understanding all the other things you had on your plate. That, you know, I thought afterwards I wrote to myself, why didn't we put Trinity? Like, we, we, like, it was silly that we didn't, but we didn't.
Thank you.
My general reaction was that you'd done a good job, Chris, but I thought the select board hadn't done a very good job of your goals, to be honest, when I read them. So I think we should be more thoughtful of the goals that we ask you to comply with in the future.
We'll take that up on April 1st.
I don't know that you want it so. In my case, I think you may have already seen this, but my case, what we've been doing for the last couple of years is spending hours examining how much of a bonus that represents actually less than 5% of total compensation against goals that represent maybe 5% of total goals, when we should in fact be focused on overall broad goals. And perhaps there's a set of these goals that's one category across all the broad goals. Because that's the thing we wrestle with, we're micromanaging this little thing. And and effectively in our, I think when we sit down with you, Christine, we go up to where we ought to be to talk about the feedback at the broader, that's what's important. This is a to-do list that, you know, it's fine to have it, but it's a to-do list compared to all the more significant things that you have to do. So I had drafted, I'm not sure where we are in the in the collective discussion. So this doesn't have to be tonight, but what I did is I took a, I took a cut at what those broader goals might be. That's it, yeah. And and I showed it to Christine first because I didn't want to have some really wacky goal that suddenly I was trying to drop on Christine's head. But I would, and I'm not, this, this came off pretty quickly. I just happen to be in a flow, but that also means it's not been refined. It's not, you know, you may look at this and I would suggest we get rid of the, but we've already said we were going to.
Yeah, the, the new contract that began July 1st of 24 does not have a bonus tied to the merit.
But I would suggest we have some type of structure like this. This may not be the final.
So let's do this. So let's, let's vote on the 2023, 2024 goals. Rule to April 1st. So the spreadsheet, Pete, that you would have received from Gus that had the scoring, on that spreadsheet was the tab I have open. Do you have that in the, on the spreadsheet that that Gus sent you? You know the spreadsheet that you forwarded to me that you gave the scoring on, Christine?
Do I have that spreadsheet?
Yes, you do. Because, okay, so so just so you know, the tab that, the, the, the goals that Gus is referencing right now are the, is the second tab on the spreadsheet that you have.
Oh, I don't have their open.
No, no, it's okay. So what I'm striving for is April 1st, let's talk about these.
Yeah.
Okay, let's not do it tonight. But just so you have it, Pete, so I don't even think that you don't have what we're going to be looking at. So let's, let's.
Motion on the award. I move that we award Christine the full $10,000 of her pending bonus for last fiscal year.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so now let's jump to annual town meeting, 2025, discussion of 2025 annual town meeting warrant articles. And I think there's one we kind of talked about a little tonight that we might want to remove. Or do you want, like, do you want to go?
No, I, well, wait, are you here, Chris? Do you have nothing on there?
Yeah, Jean.
Oh, yes, Jean's got a whole thing. Why don't we do yours? Do you mind if we do that?
No.
I'm here all night.
Jean's sitting there saying, what did they think of this an hour ago?
We're going to jump past that, the warrant article comment, and we're going to go to action item two, thirteen, fifteen, which is Jean Miniotto request a series of one-day liquor license approvals for the, for events up at Bell Forge. I'm going to read these off here. Saturday, May 10th, two to six, just got a rain date of May 11th, a Mother's Day themed event, yoga workshops, women and music partner. Saturday, May 31st, two to six, rain date, June 1st, Pride Festival. Saturday, June 7th, two to six, rain date, June 8th, Field Fest Local Music. Saturday, June 14th, two to six, rain date, Sunday, the June 15th, youth selected programs. Saturday, June 21st, two to six, rain date, Sunday, 22nd, June 10th, and solstice. Wednesday, June, now the next one, I'm just going to read off a series of Wednesday, June 25th, July 9th, July 16th, July 23rd. Are all Wednesday nights, six to nine. There's no rain date and it's Summer Sounds, Summer Sounds. On the 16th, you'll have a movie night, movie to be announced later, I'm assuming. And then Summer Sounds again. Thursday, July 24th, five to eight, no rain date, theater production, and that's three nights in a row. July 24th, July 25th, July 26th, that's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, five to eight. And I'm going to let you chime in on theater production as I finish this off here, Jean. We go back into Wednesdays, July 30th, August 6th, August 13th, August 20th, August 27th. Six to eight for a movie night, six to nine for Summer Sounds. August 13th is another movie night, eight to 10. The 20th is Summer Sounds, six to nine. And then we go, I like, I love these movie nights. And then August 27th, eight to 10, another movie night. And then we go back and as we roll into September, a summer schedule, excuse me, summer, Saturday schedule, Saturday, the 6th, Saturday, the 13th, Saturday, the 20th. October 11th, October 25th. Four to seven for the three September dates, rain dates are the following day, September 7th, September 14th, September 21st. All live music. The last one on the September there is Metro Fest. Then the last two to wrap up our season, October 11th, rain date, the 12th, the Rocktober Fest. And then October 25th, two to six, rain date, the 26th, Luminate Parade, end of season celebration. So do you want to chime in and give any insights on any of these? I know you filled out all the paperwork for the liquor license permits and the tip cards and all that twice.
You guys in the police need the same forms, just a second.
Mark?
Yeah, I was just going to respectfully suggest the motion approved one-day licenses as printed in the agenda in red.
Oh, I agree. I was just going to say, and she said.
She said, I knew, I knew, that's fine. Let me read them off, we read them off once.
And I would only point out that the very first one, Saturday, May 10th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., is on the same day as the Norfolk Hunt Club, but the Norfolk Hunt Club is in the morning, so you have about a two-hour buffer, I think.
Gil already reached out, we have all his dates and we've coordinated, there's no conflict.
Okay.
Ready? Are you up?
I'm just here if you have questions.
No, we can, we can ask more as we get closer to the dates, as you want to promote the movies and all that fun stuff, but in principle. And this is all, is this all going to be now on the front lawn, the north lawn? Okay. All right.
Ready. I move that we approve the one-day liquor licenses requested by Bell Forge as printed in our meeting agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are these all free too? None of these going to be paid, yes?
The movies might be because we have to pay for the license.
Okay.
But all the music events, the theater, all that's free.
Okay. And then why don't we do?
Do the Hunt Club.
Do the Hunt Club, yeah. I do, I knew this as soon as I did that, I was scared, I saw another one on here. All right, so let's jump to 18, the Norfolk Hunt. Request permission to ride through Medfield State Hospital grounds on the following days between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. Along with corresponding request to post signs, approval pending, public safety approval. The dates being requested are Saturday, August 26th, Saturday, excuse me, yeah, I have August in the brain from Jean. Saturday, April 26th, thank you. Saturday, May 10th, Sunday, June 8th, Sunday, August 10th, rain date being August 17th, so a week later. Tuesday, September 9th, Saturday, October 4th. So just read, Saturday, October 4th, Thursday?
It's probably Thursday, November 27th.
Down below, okay, because that's Thanksgiving, right? Yeah, so November 27th, Thursday.
Thursday should be in the next.
Yeah, okay, I read that. So that's your Thanksgiving, that's the, that's the one I know a lot of people love to go to in the morning. So we're good there?
Ready? I move that we approve the requests for, to ride through the Medfield State Hospital by the Norfolk Hunt Club on the dates printed in our meeting agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay. All right, so let's go back to, let's see, is there all the other action items for people sitting out here? All right, let's go back to where we were with discussion of 2025 annual town meeting warrant articles.
Perfect. I'm just going to hand out a copy to Bill and Preston.
Thanks, Gil.
See you, Gil.
Okay, so I want to give you an update of where we are in discussion of the warrant articles. Given that we had some moving pieces and I anticipated there would be a change on one of our articles tonight, I do not have the warrant ready for you to sign this evening. And I actually just heard from Conservation a few hours ago and finalizing their warrant articles, so we'll have you sign that on April 1st. But just to give you an update where we are, so at this point, the financial team, we have been talking about changing, we actually have two revolving funds. We have the ALS revolving fund and the EMS revolving fund. It makes it incredibly difficult for Andrew to take those accounts apart and put BLS ambulances in one and ALS in the other. So we were talking about combining them. It seemed like a really easy name change to begin with, but like everything else, it seems to be a little bit more convoluted. So the financial team has decided we're going to withdraw that and take a little more time and do it a little more thoughtfully than just changing the name. I have been notified from Conservation that they are withdrawing the water conservation private well restrictions. They're going to start working on that this summer and be, plan on putting that forward in fiscal year '26. And I think, Gus, you have an update on.
I asked Christine to drop the revision of the inclusionary zoning. I talked to Sarah Lim. Intent here was to simply get the issue on the radar screen. Planning Board's already dropped one of their own articles because of the burden of the first two here. I talked to Sarah and actually learned that it was already on the Planning Board's radar screen. And in fact, Sarah had, she introduced a perspective I hadn't thought about. With this 25% inclusionary limit, she's, they're looking at the impact that has on potential developers who have large projects, who might say, well, why don't we just make it a 40B? Because it simplifies the oversight if it's 25%. So by making it lower, you might be more likely to get developers who would choose to go through the town's normal processes. But trying to figure out what that number should be, probably greater than 10%, but, and it's smaller than 25. So I'm satisfied. They're, she got the issue. In fact, they were farther ahead on the issue than I was, so I'll drop it.
And then I think I'm not going out on a limb here when I say based on your discussion, you're going to withdraw number 26. And we will do further investigation on that.
Yep.
Okay. So based on that, I will have the warrant articles prepared and ready for you to sign on April 1st.
Okay, so does that knock out nine and 10?
That is correct, yes.
So then FY 2026 budget update?
I just want to give you a quick update. We have been working and waiting to finalize a few items. Yesterday, the Personnel Board was finally able to meet, and they voted to accept our recommendations on the classification and compensation plan. This was a two-year project, and I can't thank Kathy Vandemboem and Frank enough for being very dedicated to this project. I've been through, this is my third classification and compensation review since I've been with the town. And it's interesting to see each consultant take a different take on it. I've never seen the dedication, especially when I was doing it, that Frank and Kathy put into this project. It was incredible. And what complicated this project was my brilliant idea to make DPW reorganization and a ground study part of this. So we appreciate everybody's patience, particularly our employees who've been waiting for the results of this. Kathy has been presenting that to the employees. It's been received very favorable. The DPW reorganization we've been able to accomplish will allow us to have Mo take over the grounds division starting this year for fiscal year '26. We have an existing position that has not been filled. That will be part of the grounds department. We had been putting money aside because we weren't sure if we would need private landscaping maintenance if the DPW couldn't take that on. That is going to allow Mo to hire an additional person, and with those two people, he believes he can accomplish that now that we've done the reorganization. I think the best thing to come out of the reorganization, and I will send everything I sent to the Personnel Board, I'll send to you for discussion on the first. But since we discussed it, I wanted to make sure you knew what was happening. I think the most amazing thing that came out of it is that we looked at it from a recruitment and a retention point of view. And we wanted people who worked in our DPW to have upward mobility. To not just wait until somebody retired for an opening. We wanted people to take on more responsibility. And we wanted them to have that ability to move up through the ladder of DPW. And I think we beyond accomplished that in this reorganization. So really proud of Mo for sticking with it for two years and not letting us drop it when I really wanted to just drop it and move on with class and comp. And he is so dedicated to his employees, and it really paid off, but without Frank and Kathy, it wouldn't have been possible. So Personnel Board has voted that last night. It'll be presented in the Personnel Plan. I do need to point out, I'd be remiss, Mo would be very upset with me if I did not, that current budget of being able to do that with two additional people, one which is already funded, is if that is the existing municipal properties that we've taken over from Parks and Recreation. And that's the Dwight Derby, the Town Hall, the Library Council on Aging. If we add any of the Parks and Recreation properties or we talk about the school properties, we will have to talk about additional staffing at the DPW. But that, we should be able to, to handle that for now.
Are there any other properties, I guess particularly that Parks and Rec is handling that are these kind of gray zone properties that aren't really Parks and Rec? I guess, well, I suppose, like, I guess I would say potentially like a Baxter Park, that's currently under Parks and Rec. But that still is the kind of thing that could potentially wind up.
Yes, and those are the conversations that I've been having with Parks and Recreation about how to manage that with their staffing versus our staffing and what that would look like.
Who takes care of the pocket park?
Well, yes, now Mo. Yeah, now Mo, yeah. It was Park and Rec, and now it will be Mo.
Under this, under this scheme.
Under this new plan, yep. And honestly, Mo was covering it for Parks and Recreation when they had a staffing vacancy last year. So they've essentially been doing it for most of the past year. And then the other item we were waiting on was the police contract. We do have a tentative agreement with the union. We'll present that in executive session, and we hope to get support from the Select Board tonight. Now that we have those two final pieces of information, we have the next 72 hours booked to finalize and balance the budget on the town side, and we'll bring that to you at the meeting on April 1st.
And you're optimistic that you will be able to balance the budget in 72 hours?
It's not an option.
Just checking, it sounded so benign.
All of our back-of-the-envelope calculations that we moved, you know, hiding on sticky notes in my office and finally put them pen to paper.
All right, action items. Grismill, two action items here. Vote to accept conservation restriction at the Grismill Estates. Mark, this is something we've been talking about.
Yeah, so, so just so everybody understands, we're all on the same page. This document, which I believe was sent out to you all today. This was what I had gotten from Avon and marked up, so that, don't worry about that. It was just so we give you what was on record already since 1992, I think, at the Registry of Deeds. So had this been done properly, this would have been accompanied by some indication of acceptance by the municipality. Whether it had been a town meeting action or a select board vote, town administrator authorization, whatever. So all you're doing tonight belatedly is doing that acceptance as the select board pursuant to a bylaw, the town meeting pass that gives you that authority.
All right, that's easy enough. Any questions?
Nope.
Gus?
No, I've gone through it all. I just want to, yeah, okay. Ready? I move that we vote to accept the conservation restriction at the Grismill Estates.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And then vote to file requests for determination of applicability, excuse me, the RDA with Medfield Concom for work performed at Grismill Kingsbury Pond and to authorize the town administrator to sign.
And then we'll be signing as the applicant.
And I believe the Con Chair sent you all an email. It laid it out, so.
Actually appreciated the letter. It made it sound like we have reason to believe we can resolve this thing in a pretty straightforward way. The only question I had administratively is, I assume you guys are filling out, we got a blank form.
I'll take it.
So you're going to take care of that. Okay, ready? All right. I move that we file the request for determination of applicability with Medfield Concom for the work performed at the Grismill slash Kingsbury Pond and authorize the town administrator to sign.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Request Select Board Chair to sign the application for Medfield Housing Partnership, Chapter 40B Technical Assistance Program for 86 Plain Street Widner Estates. That was in the packet.
The only question I had on this, this is rhetorical, I know the answer. This, the fact that we're accepting this does in no way, shape, or form indicate that we are supporting the project. All the comments we put in, we're just basically getting the support that we need, however this thing plays out.
The state pays for an advisor, and in fact, Paul Havity reviews them on other projects.
All right, I move that we sign the application for Massachusetts Housing Partnerships, Chapter 40B Technical Assistance Program for 86 Plain Street, the Widner Estates.
And you authorize the chair?
And we authorize the chair to sign, yes, the Select Board Chair to sign the application.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Fire Chief requests a vote to authorize the chair to sign the annual agreement with Good Samaritan Hospitals for medication exchange. Pretty straightforward, seeing the list that he had in the office the other day, extremely lengthy.
Ready? Okay, I move that we authorize the chair to sign the annual agreement with Good Samaritan Hospital for a medication exchange.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Vote to approve the one-day liquor license application from the Trustees of Reservations for the following events. Rock the Woods Outdoor Music Festival on June 7th from 12 to 5:00. And Friday, the 13th, Scary Movie Night on June 13th from 5:00 to 12:00 a.m.
I move we approve the one-day liquor license applications from the Trustees of Reservations for the two dates just called out, reflected in the meeting agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, one last one here. Vote to approve the one-day liquor license application from the Friends of the Dwight Derby House for their kickoff party for Medfield History Weekend on Friday, April 25th from 6:30 to 8:30.
I move that we approve the one-day liquor license application from the Friends of the Dwight Derby House for the kickoff party for Medfield History Weekend on Friday, April 25th from 6:30 to 8:30.
PM.
PM.
All those in favor? All right, and then meeting minutes.
For now.
I am good with the June 25th and August 20th. I have not gone through, September 10th is a little, as you know, I go through the YouTube and I watch it, and that's a little wordy to catch that one, so I didn't finish that one.
I'm not good with June 25th. I'm good for August 20th, and I guess if you're not ready for September 10th, we'll do that later. I can tell that on June 25th, the issue is that there's a listing of all the reappointments. And it, all of the dates show 2024. So instead of showing the date of the, when we extend an appointment for three years, it should say 20 through 2027. It only just says 2024.
Well, it's a good catch.
What does that mean? That's on all of them. And then also on paragraph 10, it just, I didn't know what it was that paragraph was saying. It just needs to be edited for clarity. I couldn't, I couldn't correct it because it didn't make sense.
So let me, if I can go to that one.
It didn't make sense to me. That might be a low bar.
Do you have, do you recall what that was?
Yeah, well, I don't recall, but I, what did I do with it? It should be, did I keep it? 25th, do I have June 25th? Give me a second. Yeah, it's got to be in there. I can tell you what it is. Just need to find the right folder.
Okay, so we're talking June 25th? That was our owl night.
Paragraph 10. Meeting minutes. There we go, that's what I needed.
You weren't there, Gus?
I was saying, oh, the owl.
Well, I couldn't find it, so, so I actually pinged Brittany and said, I can't find it. Because it was one, I will tell you, the way they captured my comments on the Energy Committee truck for that kind of flushing out if Mo wanted to buy a truck, how would it work? I actually had to edit that because it didn't, it read funny.
Why am I?
You know what the conversation is?
I have it written down. It's paragraph 10 needs to be edited, but I'm looking at mine and it doesn't have.
And this is the one where we did all the appointments? Good luck with paragraph 10, holy smokes.
Yeah, why did I say paragraph 10? Because I don't see the numbers.
The only real long discussions were?
If you look, you should see something on, under anonymous, let's see. Okay, that was that. Give me a second. Should be, let me just see it. I want, for whatever reason, when I sign in and Google doesn't like the way I sign in, then they treat me as anonymous.
Oh, here you are. Okay, I think this entry needs to be clarified. It sounds like the grant is for 250K.
Oh, that's it.
Makes it sound like the grant is for 150, and the town is putting in additional 100K to fulfill the fund. Yeah, so this had to do with.
I had to go down further, that's what it is.
Vote to authorize the town administrator to sign Asset Management Planning Program Services, contract for which we received a reimbursement grant to cover the cost of the total project of 250K. And then Frank stated the total grant value was 150. The value the town must provide would be 75,000, an additional 25,000 with DPW.
So the main sentence says that we received a reimbursement grant to cover the cost of the total project of $250,000. But then the very next thing says the grant was 150,000. So it's, it's just like, I don't know what, I don't know what the grant was real, I guess the grant was 150,000. Maybe it's just the first sentence that needs to be reworded. Okay, okay.
Okay.
Seeing as we were doing the terms, I was getting more picky about edits.
No, 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 no.
Is that grant, paragraph 10? Paragraph 10, and it's, it's paragraph 10.
You can see the comments to the right, so it's.
It's on page 12, 12 of 16 of the minutes. And then the terms is up higher. I'm the anonymous commenter. So we can do August 20th.
All right, so, all right, so August 20th, we can do, did you just say no to the 25th?
I said no to the, well, because there was just so much changing there.
Okay. So, and Pete, are you okay with August 20th?
I am.
Okay, all right, so we will hold off on June 25th and September 10th, but we will approve meeting minutes for August 20th, 2024.
I move that we approve the August 20th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, town administrator updates.
Just a couple of quick things. We'll have the full town administrator newsletter shortly, but just a couple of quick things to put on everybody's radar. This Friday, the 21st at 5:00 p.m. is the last time you can register to vote in the town election for March 31st. So if anybody has not registered to vote yet, please do so. And then I would really, really like to thank Mo, the Police Department, and the Fire Department for a very crazy and busy week. We had the Water Main Break and then the tree the very next day. They were all working, you know, 48 hours straight. I just can't say enough about them. They don't complain. They, you know, are always concerned about the safety. It was just a tremendous response from all of them, and I really can't thank them enough. And they're still taking my phone calls, which is great.
All right, moving along, next meeting dates. So we've got the town election on March 31st, followed up next day with a Select Board meeting at 6:00, Warrant Committee meeting hearing at 7:00. So that's a joint meeting?
So you'll meet at 6 o'clock. Yeah, you have until 7:00, so you're going to have a short agenda until 7:00. And then the Warrant Committee is going to have their warrant hearing. They would like to continue to have their meeting here at the end of the warrant hearing. They still have some warrant articles to discuss. So if your agenda looks like you need more than an hour, I joke. If your agenda needs more than an hour, we'll move downstairs to the Warrant Committee room and we'll continue our meeting down there. After the warrant hearing.
Okay.
Why don't we make the Warrant Committee meet in the Warrant Committee room?
Then the next meeting will be April 15th, followed by April 29th as a placeholder before the annual town meeting.
I'm still holding on to it. I think I'm going to be able to release it, but now that I've said that, you know I'll have to schedule it, so we'll just hold on to it for now.
All right, and then Select Board member reports. Pete?
We had a site walk, the Select Board site walk at the Medfield State Hospital with Trinity to look at the layout of the property lines and especially at the Water Tower parking lot. And you've heard about most of the Water Tower parking lot, but we got the back.
And you've heard about most of the Water Tower parking lot, but we got the back lines, the layout of that settled at that meeting. Listened to the ZBA and Planning Board joint meeting last night where they discussed the warrant articles. Did a site walk of the parcel B with a couple residents in town that asked to do that. At office hours, the first Friday of every month, I pulled office hours at the center. Anybody wants to come, they can talk about anything. And then the Energy Committee met last week. They talked about the next Green Communities Grant and they're talking about doing the heat pump for this building, heat pump chiller. And that's when I learned that you have a two-pipe system in this building so that you can only have heated or cooling, but not both at the same time. And I guess there's some savings if you do it, it's a glycol system. Best to inspect that every year, apparently. I don't know if we do, but we should be, so... It's amazing how much George Whiting seemed to know about the glycol system in the townhouse. The Building Subcommittee is working on the criteria for the next Green Communities Grant. That's George and Jim. Penny gave us an update on the high school solar. That's apparently going to start work in 2026. I guess there was some questions that were asked by the School Committee Chair that caused it to, I don't know if that caused it to get delayed, but I know that Penny reminded them that the longer we hold off on it, the less return we get. Specialized Energy Code is coming to Medfield eventually. It has to go to town meeting to get requested, but we need to approve that if we're going to be a climate leader, which will entitle us to keep getting the grants. Electric car show is coming on May 4th at the Council on Aging parking lot. It's going to be an electric car show, I think. And then the Energy Committee goals are going to be adopt the specialized energy code, decarbonization roadmap, update the Tom Cap with waste information, Green Communities Grant application, integration of decarbonization roadmap and capital planning for energy efficiency in the buildings, finish the solar arrays that have been started, and that's it.
Right.
Yeah, Ms. Isaacson's fourth grade class graciously gave me an extra day for my Read Across America visit and I actually read it. I suspect none of you know this, because I didn't know this, this was good. It's always good when you learn something. Does anybody know of any tall tale that originated in Massachusetts? Well, Johnny Appleseed, I think, might be, but no, a true tall tale fable kind of tall tale.
We're on the edge of our seat.
Storm Along.
What the hell is that?
Well, you got to read, you got to read it to tell, it's a story about a giant baby who washed up on the beaches of Cape Cod and subsequently became a sailor. And it's a whole, it's a great tall tale. And besides that, I now understand why Storm Alongcider is there. I always never wondered what that brand was. The other, the other, the other...
Nugget of knowledge I wasn't expecting tonight.
I know, you have to stick around till after 10 o'clock to get to the good stuff on the Select Board. Like all, I think both of you, I did spend some time replying to several emails regarding Hospital Road. And I just want to let the both, all three of you know how much I appreciated your comments at the end of the video from last time's meeting, because I did watch it and it was nice to know that I was missed. The only other thing I wanted to point out, maybe you all saw it, and Chris, you're Medfield Insider, gets credit for flagging this for me, but then Steve Caskey reposted on Facebook. Jim and Cynthia, oh gee, what was their name? We have a elementary school teacher here in town. Blake Middle School, I forget, I get fourth grade on the brain, I guess. At any rate, they live out, she and her family live in Mendon. Their house burned down. And so there's a GoFundMe account for, trying to raise money for them. The target was 50,000. I looked this afternoon, it was just below, it was like 24,800 or something like that. But, so it's a teacher here in town that lost her house. And if you're so inclined, there is a GoFundMe site to contribute. That's it.
All right. I joined Pete and Gus for the State Hospital walk with Trinity, which was very helpful. It was great that neighbors came out. It was actually really good that we walked the property so we could all look at the corners of the property and flush out any issues. As I mentioned during the interviews, I had a one-on-one with Chief Carrico and I had a chance to, just get a chance to thank him for his services. I know he's not leaving yet, but we don't, our paths don't always cross, so it was really nice to sit and chat with him. Great afternoon. Had a capital budget hearing with Frank. We have one more capital budget meeting and then we're good, right?
Yes, we're somewhere to schedule that.
And then I, I don't know if you guys know, but there's a sinkhole in the post office parking lot. Kind of crazy. I happened, there's two, well, there's one that hasn't broken open yet, but I was driving home from pickleball on Sunday morning.
One right before we go out into North Street, one halfway up the parking lot.
Well, so the one, the one leaving literally is open and you could see from like here to at least the other side of the table, like where it is just washed out, it's crazy. The other one, I walked with the two policemen and it's, that one hasn't, that one's not spongy, but it falls along the line of the pipe, but that's federal land, so that's, the feds take care of that, yes?
No, it's town land.
They lease the property from us.
We own it.
It's more complicated than that. There's actually a private developer, the post office, yeah, the post office leased from us, leased to this private developer who built the post office and then leased it back to, it's insane.
But we're not responsible for the park.
Right.
Well, no, that is a long story, because when we went to go call DPW, they're like, "We're not allowed to touch it."
See, I want to know how Eileen knows that it's spongy, because that tells me she had to jump up and down on it.
You should have seen, the hole that's right at the entrance is, if a truck goes over that, it's going to go right through this, there's nothing underneath.
I'm just trying to picture you jumping up and down.
Somebody bigger than me did that. And we're like, okay, that still hasn't got to the point where it's hollowed out underneath, but it's crazy. But anyways. And then we had our collective bargaining with the police last week. Good meeting, really good meeting. I've got my interview tomorrow afternoon. I could just sleep here tonight, before you know it, I'll be back at this table. Interviewing with, as I have my papers in and I'm on the ballot for reelection on March 31st. Affordable Housing Trust, we had a meeting, we had some updates, just kind of educating people on what's happening with Rose Bay in terms of the developer waiting to meet with ZBA. And then we talked about what's happening with Medfield State Hospital, kind of the timeline we're at and some of the things that we've been talking with Trinity about. I did sit in the Concom meeting the same night I had Affordable Housing Trust, because I saw that Chris Mill was on the agenda. I wanted to make sure they understood why we were asking to be on the agenda. We're trying to clean up an issue with the resident on Grissmill. So I'm happy, I think we're on this Thursday's agenda. And that'd be that.
You're not on the agenda until you file that RDA, so...
Yep, I got to do that.
Okay. All right, and then on that note, we are going to go into executive session. Select Board needs to meet in executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, the Medfield Police League. I declare that an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Select Board. Select Board needs to meet in executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, former Medfield State Hospital property. I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. The open session will not reconvene.
I move the Select Board meet in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, the Medfield Police League. The Chair has declared that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Select Board. I move that the Select Board meet in executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, former Medfield State Hospital property. The Chair has declared that an open meeting could, would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. The open session will not reconvene after the meeting.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Pete?
Yes.
Gus?
Aye.
Eileen? Yes, aye. Right, motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move that we adjourn. No, no.
Do you want to adjourn? Okay.